One of those special nights where we're all anticipating an early release or potentially snow day tomorrow. It makes sense, the night always feels a little bit. But the weather should be good. We'll still try and get out of here at least tomorrow on the left. But I would ask if you don't mind that as you start to join me in the place please.
.........................................................
Could I get a motion to accept tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, on favor.
Aye.
Very good, thank you. So, uh, do we have any updates?
No, not in my session. Uh, workshop.
All right. Um, I did just want to ask a question. There was a letter that went up, uh, yeah, Friday, it's about, um, testing.
Yes.
And I guess there's been a shift this year that's not a hundred percent clear to me because when I looked online I couldn't find a lot, but, uh, there's a new, uh, what's called the HEP plan which sort of guides...
Yes, that's a new federal education law or revamped education law, the Students Succeeds Act. Each state in the country had to submit a plan for approval by the federal DOE. And in New York's plan, there are some different accountability measures that they're going to look to related to standardized testing. And one that stands out significantly is that pertaining to student participation levels. The expectation is that schools will have a ninety-five percent participation level when we look at across the district, individual schools. That had always been in place and the consequence in the past had been that schools would not be eligible for additional levels of recognition. So, for example, Irvington High School this year was named one of the one hundred and fifty-five reward schools in the state of New York. In the past, that list was two or three hundred longer than that, and it was commonplace to find our other schools appearing on the reward schools list. Because we did not meet that ninety-five percent participation level, we didn't receive such recognition. The next phase of all this associated with the ESSA plan is that schools, there'll be a variety of measures that they'll look at for participation, and schools that do not meet the standard, the ninety-five percent, will have to develop corrective action plans that will be monitored by state education department to, you know, establishing our pathway to increasing student participation.
But that, in terms of the, the details of that have not exactly come out, it's defined as a self-assessment and creating an improvement plan, but what that actually is in practice is still...
We have, we have not been, we have not been advised specifically what it is, other than the fact that school districts that didn't meet the standard would have that responsibility. And also, there will be layers of formulas that will calculate accountability measures that would communicate school performance, so there wouldn't be individual penalties for students, so to speak.
For individual students.
Yes, for individual students. But for schools, students that opt out would be counted as a one, and formulaically would work in, through two different tiers of formulas, would work into an accountability measure that would be publicized across the state. But there is a lack of clarity around all the details associated with how some of the formulas will play out.
Can I ask you a clarifying question? So the child will not, will be counted as a level one, but it will not affect the child, it will affect the, it will go towards the school's accountability. Will that child not get a score report that says level one? I know you probably don't know the answer to that yet.
That's correct. No, there's, we do not believe that there'll be a score report for a child where they'd receive a one. It would be accounted just for a such at a school level.
May I ask another question as well? In terms of which communities are impacted in this, obviously, there's been a fairly stable rate of opt-outs in different parts of the state, so suburban districts, Westchester, Long Island, and some upstate as well. I mean, the percentages has been what it is, and it's not like you're going to change all parent practice overnight, so I'm just wondering if we're all in the same boat on this, as far as with those other districts.
I, I would presume, yes. If that could be the case, you look at there's suburban areas, as you said, Westchester, Lower Hudson Valley, and Mol Island, you see greater opt-out levels, and you find it in reports of the state.
Yeah. It seems like there's still more details to come out about this. I mean, I checked in with our Westchester Fund and School Board Association, we didn't really have details. So, SED, they need to do a better job of communicating exactly what the plan is.
And I can, I do want to say that there has been outreach on a couple of different levels. One, through BOSI's, there's communication where there's a promise for a Q and A document on the subject from SED that hasn't been released. Yesterday, I had email communication with leadership at the New York State Council's superintendents, and they assured me that they're working with SED as well to apply the pressure to get an additional guidance, not only to the field, but to some resources that we can point folks in our community to that may have questions.
Your letter pointed to all the many changes that they've made with that's in over the last few years to be responsive, and I think there's been good changes, so it's a bit of dissonance to get this confusing message now about what feels like a consequence that's not spelled out more clearly. All right, thank you. I also just, if there are any questions not related to the budget, because we'll have that opportunity afterwards, if I would allow any community to comment.
Sure. Just make, maybe make a suggestion. It would be interesting when we get some clarity on this stuff, that there's some kind of presentation on what ESSA means, or some kind of conversation about what, because I, we, there was a bunch of other stuff in there that I, having the advantage of working in the city and seeing some of this stuff, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there, and particularly the school designations, like reward, priority focus, et cetera, all those designations are changing, and they're now calculating growth of schools on, on three years versus one, but it's, it's, there's a lot of stuff in there, it might be interesting.
Right. They're Q and A, they're Q and A.
Add that to the list of things to do.
All right. Go ahead. And just to point out too, we do have the twenty eighteen, nineteen calendar in our consent agenda, so ostensibly we'll be approving that tonight, but I just wanted to point that out.
Hi, good evening. My name is Deborah Nathan Fuchs, and I just want to say that I'm here on a personal level. I have a parent, I'm a parent with two children in the district, and I'm not representing any organization that I'm a part of, I'm just speaking as a parent. And I just want to say that this, the letter of May, March sixteenth that was sent to the parents regarding the upcoming assessments, where you said that students will not participate will be quote counted as a proficient, non-proficient level one, a parent who reads this letter could reasonably believe that if I opt my kid out, my kid is going to be scored personally a level one, and that can impact my child personally. And that's, that's simply not the case. Viewed in its worst light, it could prey on a parent's concerns about their child's personal achievement, and I think that it wasn't, it didn't really serve the parents very well in that respect, and I feel like it should be clarified in some way. And with regard to reward status, I know you were talking about that, it's my understanding it no longer exists. I don't know if that's correct, but that's my understanding, so that's not even a potential penalty for the district at this point, which is not to say that there aren't possible other penalties that may flow, but it's, that's kind of where I'm, I'm putting my focus, is that they may flow, and we really don't know, as you're all discussing now. So, I just feel like that should be clarified, because I know there are some parents here, well, not here necessarily, but in the district, who think, my kid opts out, my kid is going to get a one, and that's, that's not the case. So, thank you.
Similarly, my name is Beth Propper. I am also speaking as an individual and not in the context of any organization that I may work with as a volunteer. I'd like to add on to what Deb Nathan Fuchs has said, I concur with everything she says. I'd like to also add that I have reached out to people who are advocates, who are very well-informed about these matters, and I would like to emphasize the fact that at this point, NICE does not actually have anything that indicates what is in fact going to happen. So, anything will not, I think, very clearly affect the child as an individual, and I have had parents ask me about that, because they know I'm interested in this issue. And the letters seem to have put that fear in them, and secondly, that nothing has been decided yet. I just want to clarify that, and I do hope we have other clarifications about this in the near future. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate the feedback and the perceptions that were drawn from, from my letter, and certainly the intent was not to try to stir levels of fear or concern, it was trying to communicate information related to shifts. There is a line I want to draw attention to in the FAQ that does say students whose parents opt them out, testing will not be negatively impacted, so that is listed in the FAQ. And certainly, as more information is available, I'm certainly committed to sharing that. As always, if anyone has questions or concerns, they can always reach out to me or their child's school administration, we'd be glad to answer any questions related to state assessments.
And I believe the PPS takes that as our fine, you know, related to schedule and also assessment.
Yes, and there's a nice, and Miss Nathan Fuchs as well, who put an effort into that and collected that information from our respective schools.
Thank you. Any more questions before we begin our point of discussion?
Thank you. This has been a process that started a couple of months ago, but we started that process with focusing on what our objectives are for our school district and wanting to have not only a well-rounded, enriching experience for our students, but one where we have stellar facilities to support learning, to make sure that we have our eye on finances as we move forward, not only this year, but looking to the future, but to make sure that everything that we do sets the district up to be able to sustain its financing and education from year to year. In doing so, we've grounded all of our work in and around our strategic objectives, which are listed before you, six of them, and as we went through our prior budgetary presentations, we grounded any considerations in each of these to make sure that we consistently have that level of alignment. And in doing so, we arrive at a place today where we have a proposed budget, a budget that is balanced beneath the standards that are set forth by the state tax cap levy regulations, but also taking into consideration dialogue that's happened in the room up to this point. I would just say that tonight is also a time when the board starts to provide more targeted direction to the administration related to the tax levy that they're looking to, to raise, but also to some of the items that would be included in the budget. As you can see, we're looking at April seventeenth as a budget adoption date, so there will be some feedback that'll come to the administration today, and we'll make some modifications that will be presented in the budget presentation on April tenth, and then on April tenth, we will file guidance to be able to prepare what will be adopted then on the seventeenth. So, in doing so, when we look at... A budget. We know that every year, without anything new, there's variances that occur, that there's, you can see, obviously increases in salaries, occupational education participation has increased, and that's based upon student interest and student need. We think about costs for students with special needs and related services that they may see. We have to provide related services to John Cardinal Conner School at the bottom of the hill. We look at changes that we have in different types of placements that link to budget. We have equipment and furniture needs that happen every year that we have to address. We have both costs associated with BOSI services, and when we stop at this next point, we think about benefits. In many, many ways, the most, the largest part of benefits are looking at post-retirement benefits, so pension for our employees, and when you can see, we see large increases this year alone, ten point six three percent, which is an eight point five percent increase. We have health insurance increases, and when we think about health insurance increases, it's not just the cost of premiums going up, but we also look at the movement within our plan. So, we have staff members that have wonderfully have growing families and move through our plan, and folks that move from having single coverage to, uh, couples coverage to family coverage, so there's added costs associated with that, as you can imagine. And then, as you can imagine, looking at other things such as transportation and other contractual benefits. But when we just look at the push ahead, thinking of where we are, our budget moving forward without anything new, we're looking at a figure greater than one point seven million dollars. So, we had two budget presentations that broke our budget into two chunks, the first being business and operations, and here's a listing of all the variety categories that are included. And then, at our last budget meeting, we talked about curriculum and instruction, which encompasses so much of what our children come in contact with on a daily basis, whether it's academics, whether it's curricular services, interscholastics, and so on. So, here we are, looking at our budget process, and based upon where we were at the last time, we acknowledged that we had a deficit, and we had to make some adjustments. And we know that this is a bit of a fluid process, the numbers keep coming in, and even as recently as this afternoon, Carol got a couple of new figures that rolled in. That factors into what our bottom line is. But at the end of the day, as I said earlier, our goal is to develop a responsible budget, one that's responsible to the education of our students, one that serves our employees, but importantly, is also responsible to our taxpayers and the community. So, looking at the adjustments coming from our last meeting, there were things that went up and things that went down. So, we found opportunities for some additional revenue that we will speak to, so there's some revenue increases, and, but there's also some increases in expenditures. So, when we look at, on the revenue side, there's seventy thousand dollars with the new revenue that we'll account for, but there's also additional expenditures that have surfaced that we'll speak to. So, when we think about BOSI's aid, Carol does a nice analysis of this every year, and originally, the numbers that we were sharing were based upon projections, but as we move along in this process, the numbers get tighter and tighter, and we get more real figures. So, we're going to see some increases in BOSI's aid, and we also have a tuition student, a general ed student, a family from outside their community who wants their child to be a part of the Irvington schools, that will introduce a revenue as well. In our last presentations, and I say that plurally, both of them, we spoke about an unknown factor associated with transportation, that our out-of-district transportation bid was out, and we were looking at, seeing some significant increases, and if you'll recall, in the last meeting, we talked about a figure of a hundred fifty thousand dollars to the diligence of Carol and our transportation operation, our partners at Artsley. That number's come down to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars at this point, but that is an additional expenditure that we have to include in the budget. And we know that security is a top priority in our school community, and we, previously, in the operations budget, we talked about a thirty-six thousand dollar expenditure, which at the time, we gave the example of using those monies towards the installation of bollards around school grounds, which would be protective columns in front of open spaces. But since then, we have reallocated some funds through the budget and have looked to increase that, another fifty thousand dollars, to be able to support more enhancements, enhancements that will be guided by our security audit, and I certainly would like to draw public's attention to the letter that I sent last night on the topic, which is outlining many of those next steps. I do want to say included in that, there are some additional costs, not only associated with what we want to do, but with the expertise and the guidance that we're going to be hiring. The Buildings and Grounds Committee in the administration is currently engaged in interviewing security firms, and we hope to have someone onboard within the next two weeks. So, when we look at prioritizing the adjustments that we have to make throughout the budget, we come back to those points in the beginning of the presentation. We want to stay true to our strategic objectives, we want to make sure we're focused on fiscal sustainability, we want to think about where we're able to find some efficiencies, whether that's in personnel, supplies, and other areas, and then we have to make hard decisions, some decisions about what we're going to do without and things we're going to table for now. And some of those items are going to come up in future budgets potentially, and others we may find space for in a future capital bond when we move forward. So, a summary of where we left off on March sixth, we had six hundred seventy-six thousand dollars worth of considerations that were being discussed, and as we go through the list, you can see there's an array of items here, items that speak directly back to our strategic objectives and our balanced approach to be able to move our district forward each year, but we knew we could not sustain all of these. So, tonight, we're going to discuss some of these modifications, and in doing so, we had to make some tough decisions, and some that, some may have been easier than others, but all challenging, because these are all things that we saw as important through the variety of lenses that I referenced before. The first consideration that we're going to postpone at this point in time would be the increase of an additional point five art teacher for the middle school, high school. We saw great benefit and opportunity to be able to expand opportunities for our children, but now is not the time. We stepped back and we took a look at where our special education staffing was, and at this moment in time, and I'll come to this again in a moment, at this moment in time, when we look at our services and our programs, we're going to back off, back out one position. And I want to be clear that this is not the special class for seventh and eighth grade that we spoke of two meetings, or meeting back. That position is still there, this is another position within the district that we would look to reduce. Then salary changes. So, when we think about folks, where we have staffing changes from year to year, whether that's retirement or otherwise, you look at where folks are being paid today and the, where we anticipate new folks coming in as well, so there's some adjustments that can be made there. So, there's, then of course, benefits associated with those aforementioned staffing changes. We've talked a lot about tax certs in, in this room, and we know that the Irvington School District has great exposure because of the commercial district that we have in one nineteen in Tarrytown, and we regularly see many, many tax certs. The district historically has borrowed to be able to support the funding of tax cert settlements. We really want to begin to start to budget for these, because we know they occur every year. So, through our budget process, we started with a number that's worked down and down. At our last presentation, it was a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we backed that down seventy-five thousand dollars. So, we still have seventy-five thousand dollars remaining in the budget to support the refunding of taxes. We had a proposal to add two different facilities vehicles, but again, now is not the time, these will remain as future considerations in future budgets. Facilities projects, we're looking for opportunities here to not only include things in capital projects, but to be able to take advantage of the proposed maintenance worker that we would like to add to the budget. So, when we look at a number of forty-two thousand dollars, that doesn't mean we're going to forego some of these initiatives. Facilities equipment is another area where we've taken a look at what we can do, and rather than purchasing some new equipment, we're going to take some equipment that's still serviceable and get it serviced, and keep it in use for another year, and with a cost avoidance of eighty-five hundred dollars. And then, in looking at and analyzing our supply lines, Carol's been able to find another five thousand dollars. So, from the sixth of today, you can see that we've reduced the overall proposed spend over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, what's left? So, when we think about those considerations that remain on the table, we have a handful, some of five hundred thousand dollars, but they, they're, again, these align with our strategic objectives, and they fall into the different categories in which we presented. What does remain today is before you. The first is looking at a part-time district clerk position, a position that would not only support the Board of Education at meetings such as this, but supporting the work that happens outside of the board meeting. But we've acknowledged we have tremendous need on both the records management front and in registration. Ms. Stein manages both of those areas, and it takes an inordinate amount of her time to satisfy the many FOIL requests that come into the district, and to also manage the registration process. So, this position would be a half-time clerical position that would provide great assistance on this front. We're gearing up for, to launch a survey to our community to begin getting more feedback to inform our thinking and our planning. Related costs associated with that are approximately twenty thousand dollars, so we've maintained that in the budget. Community should know, and Communications Committee will get an update. I had a lengthy phone call today with our partners at K-12, and we're setting out a timeline where the survey will be administered in the beginning of April, we anticipate. So, more to come. In addition of a maintenance mechanic, this is a position that's largely cost-neutral, as you can see, and the rationale for it being a cost-neutral is because we'll have a skilled individual that'll be able to perform services that we would otherwise be outsourcing or contracting, so there would be certainly some savings added here, let alone the overall value add of the new things that this individual will be able to take on. We have architectural fees that are associated with our anticipated bond project that is going to focus on school safety and security, and a firm that we just hired and actually Buildings and Grounds Committee met with today. The additional fifty thousand dollars that I referenced earlier for security initiatives, the seventy-five thousand dollars budgeting for tax certs, and a proposed late bus for the middle school that would enable more of our students to be able to be engaged after school, because they would have opportunities to be transported home when, when they may otherwise have to head home on a school bus. On the curriculum and instruction front, we've been committed to growing our STEM education program, and in doing so, we would like to round out our K-12 continuum with a program addition to our primary grades. We've talked a lot about the needs for students, whether that is to support their social and emotional needs on a daily basis, the role that counselors play in our children's lives. But we, you know, the conversation about counselors has come out quite a bit in the discussion in and around school safety and security needs across the nation. Also coupled with this is a mandate from state education department to develop a K-12 guidance program where students at all grade levels will have access to a guidance counselor. We talked about the need for an addition of assistant coaches for our athletic program. This investment of thirty-eight thousand dollars, not only will help provide opportunities for more coaching and instruction for our student athletes, but it'll also provide for a better manage and safer experience for all of our programs. As I referenced earlier, we'll be looking to develop a seven, eight special class that does not introduce any new costs, and as we presented last time, actually introduce is a few hundred thousand dollars of cost avoidance, but most importantly, it is going to give us a continuum of services to better meet our students' needs, and it will help keep Irvington students in Irvington and avoid out-of-district placements. So, we think that's not only a positive for us financially, but most importantly, significant for our students. And then, of course, benefits that are associated with the aforementioned positions. So, earlier I referenced some questions, and I want to say to the board that this is a budget that's very, very, very tight. When we look at the area of special education, we're accounting for what we know today, the services that our students have per IEPs. We're not taking into account unknown out-of-district placements, so whether that's students that may be currently in process of being evaluated in district or students that could move into district. We could say at the same time, just as we know that there could be students that move in with these, there could be students that move out, but I'd be remiss if I didn't stop to say that this is an area where we're budgeted essentially to the dime for providing the services that our students need per their IEPs. Tax certs, we are taking a step forward by investing seventy-five thousand dollars... Tax certs, we are taking a step forward by investing $75,000, but there's always that unknown. We hope that with the reassessment that the tax cert rush slows down a little bit and we see some more normalcy in our taxes. But we know that's always an area of exposure for the school district that we need to keep in the back of our mind. And then there's always facility needs. You're not sure what comes up from day to day. We've taken lots of steps during my time in the district with the great work of Gary Knowles and his team in the business office to enhance our facilities and provide more preventive maintenance. But we always know that there could be things that pop up during the middle of the year where we'd have to make adjustments to our operating budget to cover those expenditures. So I share these items as a caution because we need to be mindful of how tight the budget really is. There are not extra funds for any extraordinary expenditures. And you know, a school district does have a fund balance that's available to support one-time emergent needs, but we need to be mindful of the fact that that is a pot of money that we rely on for many different things. It also ties into our future financing, we think of it going out for future bond. When we think about the district's fiscal health, financial advisors are going to analyze our fund balance. So that all will play into interest rates that we pay down the road. So in sum, to circle back, that our budget does align with what our objectives are. It is looking towards a sustainable future. We're focusing on increasing safety and security in our schools. We're continuing to invest in our facilities. We're increasing technology access for all of our students with the purchase of multiple new devices across our schools. We're certainly looking to continue our commitment to expanding and enhancing student programs, meeting the needs of all of our kids. And the example again that I bring up here is the guidance position. We're staying true to our commitment to try to deliver a K-12 STEM sequence. We're committed to professional development, recognizing the great importance and necessity that it plays in the education of all of our children and to supporting our educators to be the best they can be on a daily basis. And then of course, it complies with the tax cap levy. So when we step back and think of the big picture of the budget, there's two big pieces of this pie. And essentially, we have 73% of the budget goes directly to personnel and to their benefits. So when we look at the, what's left, you can see the smaller pieces of the pie, all very important pieces. But to dig deeper gets difficult to find efficiencies because you can see where the bulk of our funds lie. So when we do look at an overview of our budget, we've broken down expenditures by our general categories. And I think the slide speaks for itself quite a bit. You can see where the increases lie. It goes back to those earlier slides of thinking about just that push-ahead budget, that we have $1.9 million connected with benefits and salaries that are increasing out of a cap of $2.2 million. When we look at the overall picture of our revenues and expenditures, you can see certainly the revenue at the very, very bottom line and of course, the expenditures obviously needing to align. But you can see where the adjustments occur, where the expenditures occur, line by line variances. And details associated with all these are provided in the backup documents that are posted on the website and in the back of the row. When we look at the district's projected revenues for this year, you can see some areas of increase. And the large majority, this is obviously looking at the tax levy cap, the increase of $2.2 million on that front. State aid increase of $181,000. What's interesting here and worth noting, that of that $181,000, only $44,000 of that is really new or additional aid. The rest is expense-based aid, so when you think of special education and other dollars that we spend, we get reimbursed on our monies backed on the state. So realistically, that's money we're expending and getting back. But $44,000 of that speaks to basic aid increases that we see. Declines in tuition. We have fewer tuition special education students in the Irvington schools. We're not projecting any sales tax increase. A minor adjustment to the rentals that we have, BOSI's on the campus as well, and that's just an adjustment to reflect the actual use. And then when we look at a decline of other revenue sources, of $56,000, that is primarily due to one-time aids that we got from the state of New York. The state essentially issues IOUs and when they owe you for back aids, they pay them when the monies are available. So in the past year, just a lot of it to the diligence of the business office, we're able to claim some back aid that has come in this year, so we'll see some decline looking to next year. And then as we have in recent years, we're maintaining a fund balance appropriation of An overview of our projected tax cap levy, and again, there's always little figures that are moving around, but the key numbers that draw our attention to, the two factors that really drive this are the growth factor, which looks at the growth of our tax base, and then CPI or inflation, which is at the maximum of 2%. So in many ways, this is about the rigidity of budget unless we see lots of new properties come online in our community that would drive up the growth factor. Simple means for folks to be able to calculate the taxes, looking at the assessed value of your individual properties and multiplying it by the factor will show you what your taxes will be estimated basis for the school year. A little bit of history and looking at budget trends from year to year going back to 1112. You can see some of the shifts and we always got to kind of go back to the fact that we're, last year, we started to establish that new baseline with the reassessment. So we'll start to be able to see the comparisons moving forward from year to year. As I referenced earlier, there's numbers and figures that are constantly coming in and were a little tweaks are being made all the way up until the time that the budget is actually adopted. And one of those is related to this bottom line. And in doing so, when we look at the tax rate, Carol got information from the tax assessor, the number will actually be a bit lower than the 9.5. It'll be 19.5, I'm sorry. It'll be 19, approximately 19.41, which is helpful. And we would act, that would translate into an increase on the right-hand side rather than 1.9% to approximately 1.42%. So with that said, we'll circle, go full circle and looking back to the board as conversation and opportunity for feedback and dialogue that will inform adjustments that we'll make for April.
Great, thank you. Very, very clear and informative presentation for the work there. So yes, we will turn to our board. I think as has happened in the past, maybe we can start with questions and then we'll circle back around to try and provide some guidance for the administration. We often start at one handle of the other of the table, so I think you maybe started on the middle today. I don't know. Maybe you might be ready to, maybe one of them.
Chicken.
All right, I'll go ahead. Surprise. Set up. Slide. Thank you for the presentation. It was terrific, clear. Although I did have a couple of questions. So on slide 12, at least page 12 that I have here.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. You said that there was a reduction of one special ed position, not the new one, not the special class. You said, which position is that?
So it's hard, I don't want to name a particular position. So we look at the new special class for seventh and eighth grade. We had a special class in sixth grade. And because of that position not being needed in the same way, that we have one additional special ed employee. So that's where we're looking that we potentially see the reduction. I want to be real clear to say that we're not talking about a particular individual, but there, right now, based upon, again, as I said, the needs today, that there would be some staffing reallocations. I want to be mindful that we do have folks that are out on leave of absence and the like, so there's opportunities to move folks around that we hope to be in a position where we would not see a reduction in force of any of our probationary or tenure to staff.
And then, thank you. The next slide over. I'm sure I'm not going to be the only person who's going to ask about the late bus. I know there's probably a string of questions about that. I'll lead back to someone else.
Yeah, so.
Or you want to take the late bus?
Well, we know the question is, is there survey data yet? Yeah. So I don't, Mr. Sotile, if you want to come to the microphone, there was a survey that was launched last week by both the middle school and high school. So we fully anticipate that we're going to be getting more data along the way.
Can you just tell me who initiated the survey?
I'm sorry?
Initiated the survey?
From each of the secondary schools. It was communicated through their Friday communications.
So thus far, it's a combined survey. So this is a, this is data taken into account respondents from both schools, although it's more heavily weighted to the middle school at this point. We've only got about 39 responses thus far. However, of those respondent, 87%, there were three questions on the, on the survey.
Thirty-nine out of how many?
About 300.
About 300 and so.
Three hu-
Well, it's middle school and high school, right?
It's middle school and high school, so it's both buildings.
400 and something.
Right. Well, 400 at the middle school. But again, remember that there are, in many families, multiple children. So it's, I don't have an exact total for a number of households that this would ultimately impact. However, I would say that of the, of the respondents thus far, 59% have said that a lack of a late bus has limited their child's participation in after-school activity. And approximately 82% stated that they either would make use of a 4:30 bus or the children would make use of a 4:30 bus, or they might make use of a 4:30 bus. 64% saying yes, another 18% saying maybe.
So then just to be, so we're saying 39 people and understanding that we'll push that message out again, but 39 people, those percentages.
I just got another response. We're up to four now. As I said, maybe it's one of you guys taking.
How many numbers, how many actual numbers? I mean, I know 59%.
Yeah, so.
That's what, 23?
So, so right now, the, so out of 40 now.
59% out of 40, 20% of 4:30.
Twenty-five.
Yeah. Right.
Can you remind, I apologize for, I didn't respond to the survey. I didn't realize it was going up. So we're asking parents if there was a 4:30 bus that left from the middle school, high school and took the child home, whether their child would ride the bus.
Yeah, we're asking two questions. You know, because right now, there are students that are here after school for one thing or another. They use the library or they, they might be here for some extra help with a teacher or be part of our homework club at the middle school. What we're asking is, would you make use of it? But also, that question about, has the lack of such transportation had a, placed a limit on your child's participation, right? Because that's, that's one of the reasons why we would propose something like this is that we have students that are not able to take part in things after school. Also, as a school, it limits what we would even be able to run after school, right? So at times, there may be ideas for after-school activities that can't be really pursued or are going to be limited in their scope because certain students would not have access to them for transportation reasons.
The reason I ask is that, the reason I have a concern about this, in addition to our transportation costs going up so significantly over the last two years, so putting more money towards busing when busing has already increased beyond our expectation, is that it's having middle school, high school children, is that if there's a 4:30 run, that, one, I'd like to know how long it takes to get the child home, because that would be a factor in whether I would actually see if my child would ride the bus as opposed to calling for a ride, grabbing a ride from somebody else. But the number of things they can do up until 4:30, the library closes before 4:30, typically teachers don't stay past 4:30 for extra help. So without knowing what other than sports would be offered, it's hard to sign up for the extra bus or even have a conversation whether we would participate. Because not every sport also gets out at 4:30. Some of the sports are kept way past 4:30. So I'm not clear on who is able to ride a 4:30 bus without knowing exactly what is available and is going to end by 4:30 so they can catch it.
So the, the primary target audience, at least at the middle school as things currently sit, would be our students who use the library, which closes about 4:10, and our students who are in our homework clubs at both sixth grade as well as the seventh and eighth grade homework club, which gets out at also at about 4:10. There are clubs that do meet after school, relatively few, but, but they do exist. And so students that presumably either have not participated in those clubs when they meet after school or have had to walk home over, you know, particularly longer distances at times, would be able to avail themselves of that transportation. That's really the, the target group at the middle school at this point. I don't presently have a lot of belief that our athletics teams would be able to access a 4:30 bus. I would say that there are, there are many, many districts out there where there's actually multiple after-school runs, where there's a 4:15 or 4:30 run, and then there's a 5:30 run that would capture more of the athletic transportation needs to the extent that they exist. So I, I, if we were looking at athletics, I think we'd be looking at a different timeframe. I'm right now looking at some of the academic or extracurricular activities that take place after school that, you know, we have had, I can give you anecdotal examples of students who have not been able to participate. And so we have, you know, a small sample size at this point of people who responded have also suggested the same thing.
I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying in the ideal world. From, from my observation, if we could have that bus, it would obviously be very helpful. But I would also have some concerns, I'm just wondering if you, what if the library closes at 4:10, we then have children waiting around for 20 minutes for a bus, so they would, some of these children, I would think that you would want to supervise or we'd have to keep an eye on them. And then also the homework club, not every day does a child necessarily go to homework club, so is it offered every day? And again, that ends at 4:10, so we've also got children unsupervised for another 20 minutes.
So it's offered three days a week out of the five. You know, I think, should we have this, this option? And I think, let's be clear, the initial proposal for the late bus was a 4:15 bus. 4:30 is more a function of when we think we could actually get the bus here as opposed to our, our ideal time. 4:15, for the reasons that you just suggested, that is a better time. We're just not, we're not certain that our bus company could actually deliver the bus at that point in time.
David, can I just add? I mean, I think, you know, for years, we had it. And when we had it, there were more opportunities. So I think that things have dwi- Oh, well, thank you, Sarah. So I think some things have dwindled and, you know, gone away because as we, as we didn't have the, but once the bus was cut, we no longer had as many kids who were able to stay. So it's a little bit of chicken in the egg here and so I'm not sure.
But doesn't more opportunity also mean more cost? I mean, if we have the 4:15 bus and we want to offer more, isn't that another site and another expense that we'd also have to?
Reallocation of when things happen. I don't know, David, I'd leave that to you or Dave.
You know, again, I don't have something in mind to say that I would do X if this were, if this were on the table right now. But I can say that our mornings are the time when many of our clubs meet and they're pretty crowded, right? And so whether it's students who have multiple clubs that they'd like to be a part of, whether it's a teacher who has multiple clubs that they, that they're the advisor for and that they would love to shift one to the afternoon, whether it's even a club that, you know, we might want to run two separate sessions for depending upon the nature of the, you know, those are, those are some things that are a little bit hard to, to get our hands around right now. So I don't know that it's necessarily more clubs at this point. We've, we've come a long way at the middle school at least in restoring a lot of lost opportunities for students. And we don't have a proposal for new clubs in this year's budget like we have in, in most of our prior years, not to say that we never will again. But, you know, this is not a move made with that in mind. It's more a move made saying, you know, we have this time after school for a number of our students, particularly students in our sixth grade, who are not involved in athletics. You know, what, what could happen at that time that we already do that, that not as many students can access as possible? You know, the other thing I'd say with respect to the after-school piece, students who must take bus transportation to school can't access our before-school club program. And to me, that's a huge loss. When you talk about the value of a club program and what it brings to the middle school experience, if, if you are essentially kind of in a position where you can't access that, you've lost out on a big part of middle school.
Okay. And my last question, I don't want to take some issue, not that I do want to respect what you're asking, because I know this is important. In terms of the bus, again, and I probably don't understand it, it's one bus with one run?
I'll answer that one. We budgeted for two, one going south and one going north, so that you would not be on the bus in an inordinate amount of time. So that's the plan. I mean, again, this is still preliminary, as Dave, David said, and we would need to flesh out the details, when we could get the bus, the routing, but- So, that you would not be on the bus in an order amount of time. So, that's the plan. I mean, again, this is still preliminary, as Dave, David said, and we would need to flesh out the details, when we could get the bus, the routing. But the, the budget is for two runs.
Okay. And is it, is it less expensive possibly as a mini bus?
Um, they're not that much less, believe it or not. Maybe slightly, but not that much less. And, you know, again, we, we need to analyze the times and when they could deliver and all that, because those are all question marks.
To minimize having a-
I still have one more.
Yeah.
This is, this is related to this.
Oh, no good, I just want to remind you that I still have one more.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's back to you. And, and I was about to explain why. I don't want to, I don't want to have the principals having to stand up sometimes. Following, following on this precise question.
On bussing?
Yeah, I just, is-
You have a bussing related?
Is the plan to run it every day after school or just Monday to Thursday? Something that maybe Friday is a day where it may not be needed as much?
That's, that's, that's a good question, point.
That is how, used to run four days a week.
We used to run four, but I think the budget, the budget's been for five. The budget figure represents five.
Yeah, the, the budget represents five, but I probably didn't factor into the extra cost that now happened. So, on the increase, so it, it might wash.
And last question I promised to involve you. Is it possible to get the bus two days a week and still make a difference? Is, is, is two better than none? Or at this point, is it really, in order to make this work, we're trying to, we're trying to do something more consistent with it?
Something is better than nothing, I would say, without question. And, and to, to me, having lost this a number of years ago and, and having to have some difficult conversations each year around, what can we do for a kid who, who would want to participate in, in one thing or another? I would welcome the opportunity to say, hey, we have these, these couple of opportunities to run things after school. You know, ideally for me, I, I do think a Monday through Thursday setup is, is probably the best. You know, I don't know about a Friday. I, I think that there's, you could make cases on either side of that. The, you know, but, but, but to go from having nothing to getting some partial restoration of what we once had back, I would, I would say that that would be an improvement. Thank you.
Yeah, so, my, my question is somewhat different. My perception would be that for the high school, come two years from now with the change in the master schedule and the beginning of enrichment, enrichment, enrichment period, that clubs would have more time to take place then versus an after-school setting? So, does that change the calculus two years from now for the high school?
I don't think that this bus was really looked at primarily, A, as a high school bus, or B, to address specifically a, a, a club standpoint for high schools. I mean, high school students are a little bit more flexible in their time. And, you know, we have students that stay after school more often to be independently working, you know, on their own studies. So, while the library may close, it's almost daily that I'll see students sitting in the atrium and doing work. And quite frankly, you know, kind of opposite of David's concern, I see a late run at the high school level as an opportunity for students to sort of get a little bit more work done and still have an opportunity to get home. You know, we have some students that typically do stick around and that school provides them with a better place to get some of their homework done. And a late run could really work towards supporting their ability to get home after that.
And then just the, the short version, because I'm sure we'll get into more detail. Is the middle school at all considering the change in their master schedule in the future? Or is that not the, not the horizon? Like, I don't need the in-depth one, I just, I have no idea.
So, we've not engaged in a process such as the high school is engaging at this point. I, I wouldn't say that there's no consideration of, of what a schedule might yield us or, you know, change the schedule. But that's, that's a ways off for us. We're, we're, we're at a different point right now.
All right, turning back to, sure.
I, I have one.
Oh, there is.
So, my perspective is, maybe we should just table this for right now because if we have twenty-four students and there's twenty-five thousand dollars, we're talking a thousand dollars per student. So, maybe if we get a, a larger response to the, the survey, that, you know, a lot more people would be interested in it, but maybe something would be, be, feel some more trouble about keeping on the table.
To, to Ms. Paleri's point, I think we're going to look forward to the, the additional data to come in and push that again. And as we make adjustments going into the, the next meeting, I think not only reviewing some of the good ideas that came up with different models and structures for it, but also the, the data that comes back from the survey will help inform whether it's included as well.
I will say, on the high school side, though, I think the data we saw on bussing in general and high school participation is extremely low. I'm a little skeptical of the high school students would take the bus home. You know, I'm the boss for a lot of my- I'm done, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. So, my other question was in the second column, the K two, two, P, L, T, W teacher. Understand the vision of growing the program, all in, and how I feel about it. Just wondering, the question I would just ask more for public consumption, to, to understand, since we want to invest seventy-five thousand dollars into growing the STEM program by way of a teacher for the early, early childhood, right? Why can't we, why can't Project Lead the Way train our teachers to do that? Like, so what I would want to know there is like, what is it going to look like in K through two? In terms of amount of time during the week? Are kids, is that, you know, is that teacher going to be working how many periods of the week, et cetera? Like, you know, what's the access to these kids? How is it going to shape them moving into third, fourth, and fifth grade? Where does that lead into high school? I, I know how it plays into it, but how come we can't train our teachers to do that at that level?
So, I'm going to actually ask Deb and Joyce to go to speak to this because I, I think hearing about third, fourth, and fifth grade, I think they'll be pretty clear on why we don't see it as viable. But before Deb and Joyce speak, I just want to, and, and Steve, maybe you know this, but just for clarity. So, PLTW, K through five is called Launch. And at every grade level, they have developed four units of study, two engineering, one computer science, and one biomed. And when we originally set out to really develop our K-12 STEM program, we agreed that we needed to commit to certain strands. We didn't want it to be willy-nilly, like, we do this on this grade and we do something else on that grade. And so, we committed to engineering and computer science. So, when you ask what that vision is, we did that purposely for two different reasons. One is because we saw that that was the path and the gateway to the kinds of courses we're offering at the middle school and high school and where we see the sequences being available for our kids moving forward. The other reason is knowing that eventually, New York State was going to adopt the Next Gen Science standards. We knew that engineering was a key component as part of that. So, we, what we also know is our elementary teachers can never, ever, ever meet the expectations of New York State in Science and Social Studies. They just don't have enough time in their school day. So, we also needed to look at this and say, well, we're going to have to meet the new Next Gen Science standards. We know we want a STEM-based program that feeds into middle school and high school and begins to increase our numbers of kids who are engaged in this type of a sequence. So, how can we do this? So, we see PLTW, the engineering component of the Next Gen Science standards will be met through PLTW. And the life science will be met through our classrooms. And Earth, life science, Earth science, and, let me say one. Life science, I'm going to start, life science and Earth science will be met through our teachers. So, the viability of training our teachers in terms of our teachers doing this, I think when Deb and Joyce talk about the level of work and, and that goes into it, I think you'll have some insight into that. But I also would say we would also never, I think it would be very complicated for our teachers to also be teaching to all those other standards as well and to really get our kids prepared. And again, I think what we're trying to do is make sure that everything we're doing is feeding those goals of what we want students to be, know and be able to do as they go up through the years. So, that was the reasoning behind it, if that helps. But why don't Deb and Joyce talk about PLTW and the difference in schools?
Hi. I think I can speak about the third, fourth, and fifth grade part, and then Deb will speak about the K-two extension. So, for us right now, our fifth graders are, have had Project Lead the Way since third grade. And so, what we see as a result of having Project Lead the Way as its own separate class is the continuity, continuity and the fidelity by which the program has been provided for our students. And so, when you walk in a fifth grade classroom and the students have the language and have had the learning, you see what they're capable of doing and creating with their engineer, with the engineering background that they've now had. This is two and a half years. So, it's pretty awesome when you go into Project Lead the Way, I think, at any of the grade levels, to see how our kids are engaged using technology, not using technology, but in the collaboration, the communication, and their ability to work together to create something with the support of a teacher who has the perspective of working with them since third grade all the way through fourth grade and now into fifth grade. And so, for that, I think having the classroom and the teacher dedicated has been really, a really important component to making the program so successful. All the resources are in one place, all the experiences happen. So, there's this possibility for students to grow through the program with the support of a single teacher.
Do you want to just add how the teachers are part of that for them?
Yes. So, for scheduling for us right now, our students all have Project Lead the Way for fifty-five minutes a week. And the classroom teacher attends the Project Lead the Way class with our Project Lead the Way teacher. So, he or she is supporting what's happening in the, within the Project Lead the Way room, but then also has opportunities back in the classroom to make connections to the science program and also connections to E-L-A and math, which frequently happens.
So, with the vision of bringing PLTW K-two, it would be an extension and a collaboration now between two PLTW teachers. Seeing Gwen Carney and her focus and her expertise, what she's brought to PLTW has brought it to the next level in terms of her continuity, which Joyce spoke to, but also her level of focus and her knowledge of students. So, seeing the students, she does three grade levels, split between two buildings, but she sees them, each group of students, for fifty-five minutes. So, in a similar vision for K-two, we would follow the same model. Nothing has been decided based on scheduling. We're waiting, you know, for the hope of having this as part of our budget. But the vision would, would be the same model where we would have K-through-two students have a weekly PLTW session with a PLTW technology teacher. And those K-two teachers would collaborate and be a part of that work. So, again, as Joyce said, the, the opportunity for classroom teachers to support, to connect, to use that language back in their classrooms, to extend it in other opportunities, has just been an amazing opportunity for students to make meaning and to transfer their learning back into their classroom. So, where some, it's not a special, where teacher, students go to art, music, library, and it feels very kind of isolated, and we try to make connections. This is something that we could really fold into our new science expectations, support the teachers, and to really build this genuine and authentic vocabulary around STEM K-five.
I would, the other thing, I would just add that if, even if we thought that it was a good idea to extend it and have all our teachers trained, you would also be talking about a significant amount of materials. Because now what we have right now in our PLTW classrooms and those, each school has a classroom designed for the PLTW program. We would now need a way to provide that in the classroom, which I, not, nothing's impossible, but I would definitely see as a challenge we would have to work through.
So, so just to follow, so what I, I think I hear you saying is that, that basically what we're going to have now is two, or quite two, specific cluster teachers that work, each of them will now work two times a week with each class fifty-five minutes per, fifty-five minutes per week? Once or once a week? So, each class, K-one, two, three, four, and five will now have fifty-five minutes a week of dedicated STEM instruction with Project Lead the Way. And then you said a couple of times, it's the opportunity to go back into the classroom. I'm going to wind up asking the same question that you asked, Michael, about programming in a minute. But, so what are those opportunities in the classroom? Because you talked a minute ago, and I know this all too well, I, I can't stand it. But in, in those grades, servicing social studies and science becomes quite a rigorous experience for them. Both with the standards, having to know all those standards, although as condescension teachers, I, I think the expectation is that they're supposed to be familiar with all of the standards, right? But what are the opportunities? What do those opportunities look like in K-one, two, three, four, and five? Where kids are interacting off of what they did in Project Lead the Way? Like, in kindergarten, I would imagine there would be stations, uh, wait, not stations, uh, centers, right? Block center with a building, et cetera, et cetera, doing those kinds of things. And as they go higher, what do those opportunities look like in a science period? Is there a period a week, a period a day? You know, when I give my teachers a block schedule at the beginning of the year, they have a period of science every day, usually followed by, you know, followed by, coming after ELA so that there's a literacy connection, et cetera. So, like, what does that look like? And will that look like? Or maybe it'd be too deep a question to ask now, but just building that.
I mean, I think what's been the most amazing thing to witness has been the application of the, the design model and the thinking that Project Lead the Way has brought to students that could cross over into any content area. So, right now, our third graders, whether it's specifically back in the classroom where many of our third grade teachers are now implementing Genius Hour, where they're applying the same design model to Genius Hour, goal-setting, planning, trying, creating a, a pitch for their class, so the reading and writing and the literacy component, where it's authentic and it's part of this STEM experience. But we're finding those opportunities to really integrate all those other standards. So, we know that the more we can integrate and approach the standards collectively, the more time we can actually spend on standards as, as they're embedded and woven together. And math as well. So, there are things that they're doing in Project Lead the Way in third grade where they're measuring push and pull and forces. But they're also using fundamentals of geometry with angles and really measuring out. They have to really, they have to save the saber-toothed tiger who fell into a hole. And they use all the applications of pulleys and push and force. And there's such math applications there, and real problem-solving, where we are challenging students with new math, but we're also asking them to apply in an authentic way the math that they learned K-three. So-
You're urging the teachers to align the standards in such a way throughout the year? Like, when you have all those PD sets that we talk about?
Yes, so Christine Rosner is, that's like, you know, that's the, there's so many joys of Christine Rosner. But that is another joy of Christine Rosner. So, Christine actually went for the training originally with Gwen Carney to, for the PLTW so that she was, had a deep understanding of the program and can make those math connections. I would say, when you ask what happens back in the classroom, I think the greatest transfer we're looking for is all of those, the thinking, problem-solving, critical thinking, collaboration, all of those things. And the kids are learning not only in their classrooms, but as part of PLTW. So, we're not expecting them, so I love Deb's example because I think there is application to math, but it's the thinking behind PLTW that we're looking for transfer back in the classroom, not an event.
So, I'm sure you, you told the truth last year, but I, forgive me, I don't remember. And Joyce speaks so eloquently about how wonderful these fifth graders are in the PLTW year three class. What happens to the middle school, again, to give me answer, again? What, what's the PLTW continuity?
I don't know, David or Jesse want to answer?
I already got the, yeah, don't say.
You don't need the mic to you, by the way. There's not a small-
Hi. So, part of our vision was to create this K-12 articulated experience for all students. So, and the addition of the K-two teachers obviously to kind of complete that. So, what happens is, right now, students have PLTW experiences in grades three, five. And then from the Launch Program, they move to the Gateway Program, which is what we currently offer at the middle school. And at the middle school, that kind of manifests itself in a few different ways. Students take, all students take automation and robotics and design and modeling. And that's in addition to the middle school technology, which they take in, they're in grade six, correct? Right? Additionally, we've started to build in opportunities for some other PLTW modules through the Gateway Program as electives. So, this year, we implemented green architecture. And we're currently looking at a couple of other electives for next year, which are already part of that Gateway Program that we subscribe through, through PLTW. And then that, of course, builds into the high school where we currently have the engineering sequence in place.
While I have you here, I'll ask you a different question. I know that you're-
There's a beep and switch.
There was, there was.
I shouldn't have come up, okay.
I know you've started to drive a regular enthusiasm around computer science in the middle school. And the teachers and the students are very focused about it. And then looking to do more in the high school. We've even gotten requests from parents saying, you know, my, my child has finished AP Computer Science now what? Science now what. I know it's not in his budget, but what are your thoughts on expanding on computer science opportunities in either middle school or high school?
So I think we've been exploring a couple of ways to do that. So as you know, we actually brought down the computer programming course, computer programming one, the happier sequence down to the middle school, so we were offering that in eighth grade. But in terms of looking for additional opportunities, we actually are exploring the possibility of adding the computer science principles course at the high school level, and that's another advanced placement option, which is not sequential in nature to A P C S A, which is the programming course. So it's actually principles and foundational learning around computer science in general. So it's not programming specific, but another option for computer science.
Is that more of a class for, for students who don't necessarily want to program, but want to understand the basics of computer?
Right, so algorithmic thinking and those foundational, you know, the one nice thing is that the PLT W sequence dovetails nicely into these opportunities, whether or not they're part of the PLT W course or sequence or not. Because of that, and Deb's right here, but she really spoke to that idea of the design thinking framework that students have in place. I mean, that really plays a nice role in all of these courses, but it's the same type of things that they start to echo in the new A P sequences as well.
Jesse, my question is more than understanding the entire program, and if a parent wanted to understand the K twelve PLT W experience, where do they go to find that, and where's that particular?
The science fair on Saturday? This room would be full of PLT W.
At the science fair, we're gonna have all, all of our PLT W teachers are gonna be in this room, actually, and we're gonna be sharing student work, and there will be information available about the full sequence. So when we say the full sequence, it's really the three, the three, well, it's launch, which is K five, gateway, which is our six, eight program, and then at the high school, currently we only offer the engineering sequence.
Okay, so if you can't attend the science fair, and I really want to understand what it looks like and what it's called, where can the parent find that?
They should contact me, I would say. I mean, every building, I would say an open house. I'm looking at Deb and Joyce, they always, they're, as we know, the special area teachers are always providing handouts, brochures of what their program looks like at the building level, certainly at the middle school and high school on open house nights, the parents have, are invited to the technology program and learn about it. If somebody wanted to really understand the whole program, I would say they certainly could contact Jesse, they could certainly contact me.
Is there, is there a thought, though, when we launch the website, that we can find this online?
Yep, there's gonna be a technology-
You'll have your own little?
Yes, that's correct, and you can find all that information there.
I think that's one piece that obviously, as a parent, I would, of course, I'm a parent that would look for this, and I'm gonna be coming to the science fair to look and listen to them, but I do think there's still not a full understanding in the community about what we're doing, and I get it, it's new and it's evolving, and there's a, there's a website that still has to be launched.
But Deb, I just want to add something to that. I think part of that, and it's not that it can't be, but I think it's that ongoing dilemma of what's technology, you know, so as you heard everyone speak, we don't see this as technology. STEM has a technology component to it, but we see it as deeply part of our math program, of our science program. So yes, it would be better to have it available and figure out where it goes, but it feels like it belongs in a lot of different places, because it's really about, goes across the curriculum. So I think that's something, I don't know, I'm just looking at everyone to say, that's kind of something we should be thinking about where it goes, but I would hate to pigeonhole it that somehow it belongs in a technology corner.
And I just want to add one thing, based on the conversation Raina and I had today, is, you know, again, while we, while we think of this as STEM, and this really does work nicely with all the other subject areas, we still have identified, are, are in the process of continuing to identify what our needs are from a technology skill standpoint for students. So this doesn't address any of those technology skills that we want students to have. This is really about STEM thinking and how that thinking applies to subject areas across the board. But I think, you know, this is more you'll hear from us, you know, as time goes on, around how do we start to address those other needs that we have around formal technology education.
So when I look and see that as a K two to PLT W teacher, I assume that suggests that that teacher has to be trained in PLT W to teach this course. So is that an additional cost that teacher, that we have to incur, or is this a teacher that's already trained that we're hiring to bring in?
No, the person would have to be trained.
Okay. And is that cost built into that? It is.
The training cost? No, it's built in, it's not, it's not in that number.
No, but it's already in the budget.
Yeah, the supplies and the professional learning and the objectives.
Right.
So is it a case to say that we have a pretty good leg up then, doing this in terms of getting in front of the NGSS in a big way? I mean, because I've been doing a lot of work around that, and I know that the concept is around phenomena and the idea of design-based thinking, so.
What's NGSS?
The Next Generation Science Standard.
Again, I just want to, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. It needs that part of the NGSS, yes.
No, but the concept of all the subjects and the cross-cutting concepts and all that stuff, I think, but it gives us a nice leg up based on what I'm here using across K through twelve. It pushes us towards the goal that we set a bunch of years back, that we talked about.
And again, just for the big picture, so aside of, with IHS engineering sequences aside for the launch and the gateway program, how many teachers do we have trained in PLT W?
Total for all subject areas?
Yes.
So currently-
K twelve?
With the high school aside, because that, I'm talking about elementary school.
So just for the elementary school right now, it's only Gwen and Christine, where the intention was not for Christine to teach classes, but just that she went through the training.
Gwen and Christine, and then in middle school? How many are trained in PLT W?
Two.
Two.
And which two of those?
Diana Cassidy and Marcus Owens.
While you're up there.
That's why I moved.
More for you than, than, back to Deb. So, you know, Catherine and myself, over the last couple of years, we've asked questions related to, you know, as we make this significant investment, you know, what are the implications in terms of how benefits both our girls and boys? I appreciate that some work that's done to show the participation in engineering and computer science classes, and it was clear that it started off with about ninety-five percent of boys in these classes, and there's been a shift over the last two years to about seventy-five percent. And to make the linkage to this request, I know that you have said that, and there's a lot of research that says that students, children are self-adapt, identifying ability as young as four and five, so I think that speaks to me when we talk about this. My question for you is, in secondary, are there any efforts being made specifically to try and get more balance in terms of gender participation in these classes?
So just to dive a little deeper into the numbers that you just mentioned, so the numbers we share with you were that over a four-year period, our enrollment in computer science and engineering courses has doubled, while the percentage of male females in those courses has gone from ninety-five percent male to seventy-five percent male. So we've seen, while doubling the program, we've seen a significant decrease in, closer to that balance and equity that we're looking for. I think, and again, because we haven't, like, done a study on this, but it stands to reason that because we've started to offer PLT W at the lower grades, and we're now seeing these students rising up through the ranks to start to take these courses at the high school level, that because of that exposure to the PLT W program that they've had earlier in their academic career, it's now starting to kind of rise to the fact where they've taken these classes, they've had exposure to it, and rather than being unknown or this predisposition to something they may not like, they're recognizing that the skills and foundation that they're receiving in those courses is worthwhile, and they're beginning to attend those courses now. I can't speak to any, you know, any efforts to be ever made, specifically made toward, oh, but to, to get females in particular to do this, but no, that would-
I mean, while, well, the effort that I'm about to say isn't directly trying to target females, per se, all of our counselors this year actually participated in a PLT W conference, and for me, what that does is allows our counselors to better articulate the programs. So when we're able to better provide it as an option for students who maybe hadn't previously been thinking about it, I think that we not only can grow the program, but start tapping into students who otherwise may not have been thinking about it. So often, that may be already represented in a certain program, and in this case, could certainly be a way for us to be targeting more females.
My question related to just this question is, with Dow's, you spoke to connections, but I wanted to understand a little bit better, I hope I didn't miss it, what the experiences or curriculum for K two is with this PLT W class?
So it'll be the same thing that we've done three through five, it'll be the engineering strand and the computer science strand. Yeah, that's third grade.
That's their grades. Yeah, but I guess that's, do you have some examples like that, I guess, just for me to more vividly understand?
I can send you, I mean, I could forward you the engineering, computer science units, the topics.
I just wanted to go back to something you suggested before, might be, just because I, you know, the shift has been underway for quite some time now in terms of moving toward this kind of work and, and working through this kind of work, it may move us, you know, like you suggested, to think about not only the high school program, but also the middle school program and elementary school program, thinking about where those opportunities will lie, you know, going down the road somewhere. But programming the school in a way that kids have access to more than just a fleeting moment of science and then going back to, but really setting up the program to do what could be done so much more powerfully, right?
I think we're pretty, I think we're actually pretty pleased with the way it's been implemented, so I'm not exactly sure I understand what you're saying. In other words, we've gone through, and keep in mind, this is, we started with third and fourth grade for just a couple of years.
Just back, it's right now, if I have fifty-five minutes a week, and what to me, in my opinion, addresses that first goal of rigorous academic experiences and curricular experiences for children, probably the best of anything that I could think of, right, in terms of design-based thinking, problem solving, all those different rigorous approaches to education, and then they go back, that's fifty-five minutes a week, and they go back and have reading and writing, et cetera, et cetera, and there are, and we find opportunities for these linkages, right? That's what we all just said, right?
But I think what we'll be doing is-
How do we be more deliberate about that, is what I was saying, it's just a suggestion.
No, and I'm, so I guess I just want to, as our, our plan is, now we need to implement the next-gen science standards, so we'll be implementing units of study, as I said, in life science and earth science, and we would expect, as you know, it is phenomena-based, and that is the training that the teachers will get. So we would expect that every new curriculum that we're rolling out is, that is what, I mean, that's what we would hope, that's what it looks like, so I think that's what you're saying, yeah?
Yeah, I'm, really what I'm saying is, how do we get kids a period of science every day of the week?
Right, so, and we're like-
And social studies a period of every day a week, but that's not for this one.
So Dave, you've already had a half-hour question.
Yeah, but the most one I've signed yet, by four of them.
Can I get this one more, last question for Deb? In terms of the, so if I got this correctly, this K two teacher would pull the kids out of class, they go to the PLT W classroom once a week for fifty-five minutes. As a parent, if I had a K three two student, one of the questions that would come to mind for me is, what are they, what are we, what are the children not getting, or what are they missing that they used to have for those fifty-five minutes? Where does that fifty-five minutes come from? Just out of curiosity. Sorry?
I think it really goes back to what Raina and all of us had shared. So the goal is that we would be addressing our next-generation science standards through the implementation of PLT W. So they're not losing anything. What they're gaining is this very unique experience, the specialness of it, they go to this PLT W room, this highly-focused, trained teacher. So from my perspective, yes, it feels different because it's named different, but science instruction is happening in our classrooms, and the more we embed and align them and keep them parallel, it's really an opportunity for them to do science in this specialized way.
And the reason I ask, this, I will be honest, is the one that I have the greatest concern about, because of course the cost, that's really the only reason that I honestly believe in this program immensely, and I understand why you're here before us looking for this. But if, if, if part of what the objective is, is to take the child out of the classroom and bring them to the PLT W classroom, I'd like you to comment on why the teacher that can't do that.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer this one, if that's okay, because I think this isn't just about K two, it's what we're doing three, four, five, so this is K five. So here's what I, our teachers, as, as many of you know, there's just so many hours in the day. We don't do science and social studies every day, for the most part, because we would never have enough time to do that. So we're always balancing those two things. We have a rolling out of the next-gen science standards. I will guarantee you, there is no way that we will be able to prepare and train all of our teachers to implement all of the standards in, for next year. It's, it's just never gonna happen. We, we're in the process of still trying to find a program that is aligned to the next-gen science standards. We're not taking the children out of the classroom, so when you say that, I feel like that would be the last thing we would want a parent to feel. What we're doing is we're providing this incredible environment to support the growth of students through this, through not only by meeting the standards, but I think what we've said right, right for the last few years, which is what we believe is important, problem solving, critical thinking, collaboration. So it's not separate, that that's why having the teacher in the room is so important. It is not in isolation, it is one way that we're gonna be able to meet the standards, and by the way, those habits of mind and the, the critical kind of thinking that we know kids need to do. So I think we see it as completely integrated, not in isolation at all, and that's true in, I don't see Joyce, but that's true in, in fourth and fifth grade as well.
And hearing you, what we talked about last year, where there were certain things in the budget that were frankly non-negotiable, it sounds like this is non-negotiable. That, that's really what I'm driving at, is that if this is not a pullout, if this is not something that is an extra bonus, a special, if it's non-negotiable, that's what I wanted to, is that what, is that what we're here?
It's non-negot, you know, I could say a lot of things that are non-negotiable from my perspective. The reason why I think it's non-negotiable, I would say, is based on the, the goals and the, and the expectations that the Board of Education had laid out for us, I don't know how, I'm looking at Michael and Catherine, I don't know how many years ago at this point. So yes, it's non-negotiable. I also think that, true to what we believed, even though it took a little longer, those next-gen science standards took a long time to adopt, but we have had a plan in place since the implementation of our first PLT W launch at third and fourth grade, knowing this was coming, knowing that those engineering, there is no way our, our elementary teachers are prepared to teach to the engineering standards. They're complex, and they need a lot of training. And so for us, I think we see this as, we're gonna provide what Dave is talking about, this rigorous experience in the other areas of science as well, but this engineering component can come through a highly-trained teacher in partnership with many of our elementary teachers who are very interested and love being in that classroom with Gwen Carney. So it seems like it's a win-win all the way through, but for me to, or any of us, I think, to say non-negotiable, I don't know, I think that, that we don't see that as our place.
Yeah, so, and, and that's where I was waiting to jump in. I think, we look at it through a couple of different lenses, you know, Raina and our colleagues gave a lot of the practical examples of why it's a necessity from a curricular standpoint, but I, I see it as a non-negotiable from a visionary standpoint. It's what we want for our kids. We want to separate Irvington from other places. If you walk into these PLT W classes and see the level of engagement, the level of innovation, the, the problem solving, the communication, that's where the non-negotiable is. We want our kids to be able to be creative thinkers, we want them to be thinking outside the box, and we want to equip them at early ages to be prepared to do that. So whether we're looking at the, the self-identification and the data sets that Michael and Raina spoke to before, but it's what we want for our schools and what we want for our district, and this is a vision that we mapped out five years ago, and I think it's about time that we deliver on it and, and round this, this out. And what that does do is provide opportunity, not only to, to address curricular needs that are present, but it gives us that opportunity, not to necessarily bring closure, but to be able to round this out, then to focus on additional other objectives that are gonna benefit kids in different ways. So for me, it's, it's who we want to be as a school district, and it's the type of experiences we want for our kids. And we can step back and we can talk about all the greatness that exists in our schools, but this is a model that, that we, we've really excelled at, it's been implemented well, our kids have tremendous experiences, and we need to extend this to the rest of our children.
Maybe we'll circle back to you, Dave, with your third question.
No, I haven't even, uh- Ryan, you wanna?
Sure. I'll go in a completely different direction. It's probably more a question for Carol. Taxer, so we have seventy-five thousand dollars that we want to allocate towards that, which I know is less than we wanted to allocate. Historically, what are, do our taxers look like on a year-over-year basis?
So that, that's also a kind of a variable answer, just like everything else. So we've had years where it was two million dollars a year paid out, and we've had other years where it's much lighter. This year's been a little bit lighter, because I think with the reassessment, things have taken longer to settle right now. So a lot depends on when things settle in the courts and when, how much we can test tax certain when we decide to settle. Right now, the exposure- Right now, the exposure's about eighteen million, if you were to look at total dollar amount. But that's not what's gonna settle for. And I've just recently got the new exposure analysis. I haven't had a chance to really, you know, put my spin on it in terms of looking at the analysis I did last year, where I kinda figured out what was most realistic. You know, it's a concern, the timing is, is where you can spread things out. Any of the large settlements, we try to make multiple payments to lessen the year-to-year impact. So that's something we, you, you actually have been helping to negotiate, which has been really good. So that helps. And, you know, we have to keep our eye on it. I, I have to keep doing the analysis. It's a start to budget some, and then we need to keep thinking about maybe just increasing that so that we're not having to ever borrow. But if we do, we do. Most districts, by the way, do have to borrow, I will say that.
Well, in fact, we, we had part of the money until, until recently. And we have, in our time, seen taxers that added up to millions of dollars. Right now, we seem to be in a lull. But, I mean, I think your analysis was that it might be five to six million dollars that we end up paying out. So it looks kinda small.
Yeah, it's the timing. I mean, we still have a reserve. You know, so there's still a reserve fund, and then there's a timing of it.
You know how to handle it. I know we have somewhere with the-
The reserve's a little over a million dollars right now. So, you know, at the end, we try to bolster it again, see what we have, we've used some this year. Like we've used about three hundred thousand this year. It might have been at one point two million, we're just under that right now. And again, you know, we put it as a risk, because it's just one of those things that's always out there. You know, I'd love to see more, yes, but there are other ways to fund it if you need to do it.
I guess, point those out, if, if the seventy-five thousand won't cover our exposure and we're gonna have to borrow anyway, do we wanna look to taking the seventy-five thousand dollars and allocating it towards programming or something else where we can use it for the students, given probably the incremental borrowing cost on that additional seventy-five thousand isn't very much?
Well, I mean, my goal is fiscal sustainability, the number-six goal, which I have right up on my, above my computer and right in front of me. And, you know, I, I guess I kinda need to say there's, there's some accountability to that goal as well. And just making a start. You know, yes, you can decide that, certainly.
And I'd say, you know, a couple of years ago, in the same spirit, we started off by looking, we created a capital reserve fund and for, for similar purpose. So this is tiptoeing into, into those waters. When I referenced the concerns related to the special ed along with taxers before and facilities, you know, the board does have the ability, should be in position, to transfer mon, money throughout the course of the year if they're available. So, you know, potentially down the road, this could support another need. But I think it's responsible for us to be targeting this at this point in time. And I'd much rather see a number with another zero up there, considering what the obligations may be.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I, I mean, we have a significant potential obligation. And I think we all agree that we'd love to put money aside and to account to fund it, but just not sure if we're ever going to have enough in our budget to make a meaningful contribution towards that liability if we're always gonna have to be borrowing. And maybe it's a conversation we need to have in terms of whether we're gonna wanna direct those monies elsewhere or how we're going to approach that.
Like I said, this is tiptoeing in that direction. And, and, you know, we go back way well before my time. I don't got to remember, a member of the audience, there was a, that actually had to bond taxers. And it's not an uncommon practice for that to occur. Since I have been here, we did do, completely some short-term borrowing. And there were three million dollars that we always support taxers.
So everyone else to call one of the questions.
Certainly, I, it's totally. Could you, Chris, please tell us a little more about the way that the security initiatives are going to get moved around? Is there anything, what can you talk about right now?
So, I actually have a copy of my letter from yesterday right here.
Do you feel like it's really been adequately covered in your letter? Don't. But if, if, if we could talk to the, what's been added to the budget and what's been-
Yeah, so I, I wanna say, so when we think about the, the, certainly, I'll allow my letter to speak to itself on, on the, the level of initiative that we're taking and the action that's been taken to this point. But, so when we look at where we are with respect to the budget, eighty-six thousand dollars, we know eighty-six thousand dollars, just like the taxer, isn't, you know, solving every need that we have at this point in time. So when we step back and look at eighty-six thousand dollars, you save about fourteen thousand dollars of that is gonna be the ongoing security support that we're going to, to have from what we anticipate, the increase in the BOSI's coser that we'd be contracting with, with one of these particular firms.
Which, by the way, there's already some money in for security. So I just wanna add that. So part of the push ahead budget has money in for the Safe Schools Coser, which we do a lot of things with. So there is part of that already in there. This is just additional.
So, Mara, I would, I would, I would hesitate, hesitate to exactly say what that, the monies would look like. We wanna, we, as I said, we met with our architects today. And had initial conversations, the architects have had two walkthroughs on our schools already, beginning to generate their ideas. With the partnership with a security firm, we're gonna identify where we can get the best bang for our buck and identify the, the low-hanging fruit. So the one thing that's become clear in our initial interview that we had with one firm is that a lot of the low-hanging fruit are, aren't expensive endeavors. So that there's, there's shifts in systems, shifts in practices, and small investments that you can make that can improve safety and security in schools in general. But then there's gonna be measures that we will take, and we wanna follow the recommendations of the experts rather than, you know, throwing money after an endeavor that may not be, have as great of an impact as, as it could. I think they, by way of example, if we were to roll back the hands of time a couple of months ago before the recent tragedy in Parkland, we were starting to prioritize what some of our needs were based upon what we were seeing happen in, in our environment. So when we're thinking of unfortunate terror situations that were occurring, vehicles were being used as, as weapons. And we knew that we were gonna be pursuing a bond, that we would tackle building-based security needs. So we started to focus our thinking in around the bowlers. I can tell you that maybe that shifts moving forward with the security partnership.
Bowlers are a lot of bad drivers.
They are, they are. So, you know, I think we, you know, we've taken steps with the addition of another security guard here at the campus, but I think larger scale, I think we're gonna be looking at some enhancements to some facilities. But again, I'd be cautious to say exactly what they are.
One, thank, one other question is, is just my experience with, with the whole process of working with the state and with unfunded mandates. But if the state says we need a K-five guidance counselor and we need to integrate counseling throughout the, throughout the district, there's no, that is never optional. I mean, it's, that simply, so in terms of trying to ascertain to which are the, which are the non-negotiable?
So there's, there's certainly the accountability to have a comprehensive K-12 guidance program. I don't know what the SED police would necessarily do at this point in time. But at the same time, we're gonna step back and we're gonna talk about the types of experiences we want for our children. I think that idea of having continuity in guidance services and to think about not only what can happen from an education standpoint and the lessons that guidance counselors can teach, but to be able to provide support for students and their families and teachers at an early age is gonna be critical. And I think it's going to have significant impacts as we look at our students maturing through our school system. And that'll provide some, some, some great opportunities that actually could provide support that may take some stressors someday off some of the, of what we're seeing in the middle school and high school as far as counseling and services that are extended.
I think the only, I would add to that, you know, right now, our support, our psychologists are our one social worker for the entire district. You know, they're dealing with a lot of different things that I think if we would have some intervention and we would have some program and, and some really cohesive approach to how we support kids, I don't think that anybody can argue, kids are different today, level of anxiety in kids. So it's not necessarily a child who needs to be seeing the school psychologist, but with the support of a counselor, with the support of that level of teaching, that would be teaching in classrooms to all students, not just seeing individual students. We know there's a greater need, and we are not meeting that need. I would say right now, I mean, almost all of you, some of you have been through the middle school. I mean, I think you see the level of support, a level of emotional support that our two counselors at the middle level provide. And I think what Chris just said is really true. We're seeing it earlier. Our fifth graders are, are just as needy in some ways as some of our middle school students in terms of that developmentally. But I would say even at our younger levels, K through four, the needs are there. And I think that the reason that New York State is putting it in is be, is because there's a reason for it. And, and it's because kids need it, and they need something different than we've been able to provide. And again, as I would say, as I said last time, there are many elementary schools that have had this in place for many years. This is not really a new idea, and it's an idea that we recognize before. So the fact that New York State is now making it a mandate is just, I think, recognition of, of changing needs of kids.
I, when we step back and think about where we are today, and Reina mentioned our K-12 social worker, I, we roll back the hands of time, wish, four years ago, before we were fortunate enough to have Gina on, on staff. And I, I can't imagine how we'd be surviving today without the level of intense support that she is providing for our students and families right now. And there's much more she can be doing as well, so, because the needs are there. So I think this is gonna be a tremendous benefit to the, to the elementary community.
Just to pick up on that, the, absolutely, in the middle school high school, the work that are driving out to doing, are doing is tremendous. So appreciative, but I don't understand necessarily the model in K-five. I mean, can you give some scenarios of where a K-five guidance counselor might come into play more specifically?
Sure, I'd also turn-
And it can't quite apply to that. Yeah, I think of the, the teacher being your go-to.
Right. And they are, but I don't know, Joyce, do you wanna talk, do you wanna speak to that, or?
Yes, I would say that part of-
Why don't you come to the mic, Joyce?
I would just reiterate, I know other Dr. Core or Dr. Harrison just said, while it's a state mandate, this is something that we've definitely seen coming up in terms of the level of support and the variety of support that our students really need at this, especially at Main Street School. And I would say if we could even intervene at earlier grades, it would be a benefit. We all know that early intervention really supports students in the long term for successful gains. So I would say we're looking, we haven't fully, obviously, we're waiting to make sure that we get the position, and then we'll be able to sit together and say, like, what will this position look like? But I think we imagine that it's a partnership among our other service providers for support. So we have school psychologists, we have Gina Menendez, who's amazing, but she's K-12. So this person would provide classroom interve, like, would go into the classroom and provide instruction for students connected to social-emotional learning. I think what specifically that would look like, that's still under discussion for us as we, as it takes shape, as a position takes shape. And obviously, as we bring in candidates to, to meet with them and who's, who takes that role, they'll have a big part, because they'll come to us with experiences as an elementary school guidance counselor, if that's what would surface. I would say that it's someone who works closely with us in terms of our support. We have response to intervention. And as part of our response to intervention, you know, students are identified as having, needing social-emotional supports, whether it's behavioral in the classroom, it's at recess, it's in the cafeterias, lunchroom bus. We, right now, struggle to put interventions in place and monitor that, monitor them successfully because we need additional support to do that. And so we have this great system academically, in terms of how we support students through response intervention, but we really do need additional staffing to bring the same level of support to our students socially emotionally.
Right, so you have, and you also have some great programs like mindfulness of thousands, character, Main Street, but I guess this is to more specifically follow students in terms of the supports that-
Well, I would say it's both for individual student support and maybe groups of students, but it's also like K-five support. So when you talk about mindfulness and, and the approaches that we have happening, I think this person supports a consistency for all students to get those supports as well. And so it's layered in terms of what we would see the position being.
I think there's aspects of that work in similar ways as to the P-LTW model illustrated, that there's partnerships and with a counselor going in and teaching lessons in a classroom, teaching social skills, and that it plays a key role in modeling strategies for students and teachers that then can be carried forward in individual classrooms. And so there is that balance, there's a curricular component, there's a holistic school piece. But I don't want us to overlook the individual and student group needs as well, because this elementary guidance counselor is going to have individual counseling sessions. There's gonna be support to parents, there's gonna be support to teachers. They're gonna facilitate social groups for students that are having common challenges or have common needs in school to help the students to be much more successful.
But I, and I would say we also just wanna, I think Joyce hit it too, the whole goal is to develop our K-12 continuum. So it's based on the ESKA model. And so that model would be, this new person, should we have, should we be able to have this person will be in the room with Liza and Griff and all of the high school counselors and really looking at what we say is if this is what our expectations are at the secondary level, how do we support that for students coming up? And according to the new standards and the new expectations, they really touch on everything from, it's, you know, prepare students to participate in current and future educational programs, provide information related to college and careers, assist students who may exhibit challenges to academic success, including but not limited to attendance or behavior. Where appropriate, make referral to a properly licensed professional. So school districts that have this position, that is, it's a scaffolding of support. Right now, I think sometimes our school psychologists get pulled into things that really should not be at that level. It's getting escalated because we don't have the interim role that you would see at the, at the middle school with the counseling department.
Thank you. Deb, do you wanna?
Yes, okay, just a couple of questions, 'cause I, the numbers are tight, like a tire, and I know this is already a budget that we're conservative on. Question for Artie with athletics, because you know, I can't talk about high school without that. In terms of the assistant coaches, I'm just looking at from last curriculum and instruction presentation your athletic participation and survey data. I was curious for those assistants that we're looking to hire, which sports they're connected to? Are we able to say at this point, 'cause I can't remember from the last time. I think you did, but I didn't.
Yeah, so, and, and they're kinda tied into sports that had them in the past. So the two soccer programs, boys and girls, the two basketball programs, boys and girls, baseball, softball, lacrosse, and field hockey.
I'm sorry, do we already have an assistant coach in the girls' basketball?
Not a volunteer.
And we want to pay them that? And those are all sports I would just note that we have high participation in. There are also sports where we have strong JV teams, is that fair or so?
Yeah, actually, in the field hockey, it's a large varsity team. So the hope is that they're working with a large number on the varsity, but potentially, you know, possibly building four JV in the future. But to have that extra set of eyes and expertise working with the program.
And last year, weren't the boys, Dr. Wilson, there's some concern that some boys got cut? Would this enable more boys to participate in the-
I think with the assistant coaches, it's, it's really threefold. It actually helps evaluation at certain levels. It helps in game strategy, game management. It helps in specialization. If you have an assistant coach who's maybe specialized in pitching, or a goalie, or a defense, or offense, really adds to your, not only varsity program, but to your whole program, where they can go and work with kids at different levels. It also helps in terms of, you know, safety, extra eyes, extra people at games. Anything were to happen in a varsity game, you know, we're not gonna end the game, that assistant coach can maybe handle whatever that emergency is, and the varsity coach continues. And it really helps to develop the program. And it really helps to develop the programs.
That's what dawned on me when thinking about who you need the assistant coach for and looking at the sports. Eventually, these field kids open up. So we also have fields that are not, that, you know, these kids are traveling, they're, they're moving, they're spread out, so to have an extra set of eyes, I would assume is another reason.
Yeah, and a lot of sports will split, so they'll set a varsity maybe to the JV up to another field. So to have extra people involved in the program is beneficial. And we do have days where a coach is sick or absent, and, you know, having that extra coach there doesn't afford us the ability to have a practice canceled. One of those coaches can step down and cover that level.
Great, thank you very much. My other question was to communications and survey, and maybe you would correct it to my phone, no. But twenty thousand dollars. I'm curious why the number is what it is, like, what's involved in that cost? I know you're on the communications committee, but is that, is that some of that money already spent? Or is it, have we, is this the total cost for the survey? Or have we already spent some money on the survey that don't perform? Do we get some feedback?
Yeah, so, so two, there's two aspects to it. Survey cost, and again, it's through BOSI, so it is payable. So we'll get about a forty percent return on, on those, those funds for the following year. But the survey administration itself, and all the technical support is approximately sixteen thousand dollars. That's the development and administration of the survey, as well as that coming to be able to present it publicly to the Board of Education. The balance of it, it's sixteen and change, and then three thousand and change, provides for opportunity for professional learning, for administrative team, that we'd be able to identify a workshop opportunity down the road, where they'd actually bring staff out that would walk through the data with us and help us to understand how we can utilize that data to inform our thinking and planning as an administrative team.
Okay, and you said April for the survey?
The survey will be administered in April, yeah.
Did we see a draft document?
Yeah, we can certainly send the draft around to the full board. The committee has seen it tonight, should be getting essentially the final draft, I think it's over a week in. So this is, so the survey administration that we're talking about now for April has been covered, paid for within this year's seventeen, eighteen budget.
So how much is that?
That's similar, the sixteen thousand dollars. So if we were to administer a survey next year, so the consideration may be that rather than doing it every year, that you would do it every other year is a possibility.
That's what, that's what, I'm sorry. So we spent sixteen, that survey that we're going to administer in April is already been paid for? So this twenty is for next survey? And, and in discussing the survey for this year, was it a two-part survey? Is that why we're building this into the budget? In other words, we covered some issues on this survey?
No, the, the idea when we look at a school climate survey, that it's the idea of benchmarking, that you would establish your, your baseline this year, and then you would look to revisit it in subsequent years, whether next year or two years down the road, to be able to measure.
You ask the same questions?
Yes, and that's the design. And there's, so our, our survey has been custom, we work from a foundation, which is a developed and tested survey that they are using across the nation. And we've tweaked some of the language to keep it consistent and true so we can have some connection with their data. And then we have some customized questions that we've added to it, but the foundation of our survey, we'd be able to use from year to year.
And last question. If, since we've already spent the money and the survey's going out in April, it sounds like it's a super idea, are we somehow not doing ourselves a service, or somehow diminishing the importance of this survey? We don't administer a survey next year, but we can save twenty, and we do it every other year? Is there any downside?
I, I think, I, I personally don't see the downside. It's, you know, we're skipping a year in, of data. The, the challenge in a world of tight environments is, is having that commitment to make sure we come back to it in two years, if that was to be the decision.
Are we also committed to doing this every year? I mean, what's, like, how does this work? Is it usually you do it every?
I think we have to see, right? I mean, I think, I think we do it, we see whether it's-
Well, only because-
I think, I think we know that this is a conservative, a conservative budget, so if we decide, hey, we can do it every other year, I think we know that twenty thousand's not a big number. At the end of the day, it could go to another use if we decided survey is not the right use. No matter what, I would suggest that we get, we would at least have that three to four thousand amount to have the ability to have our administrators work with the survey data and think about how it's useful for them.
Yes.
Will the, will the data be presented in a way that is?
So the way, so the survey, like, I mean, it's moved to be that it's April, we're hoping it's March. But the, and that would have helped us inform our thinking about it during our budget process, so that's unfortunate. But the, the survey will go out, it will be publicized, and we're looking for, for a great response from our, from our stakeholders. We would get additional to the board of administration, additional information about, about, you know, some of the data, and then we'd have a formal presentation here at the board meeting this spring. And then that piece, that three thousand dollar piece is then the opportunity for K-12 sites to work with our administrators and break down the data and see how it's going to happen.
I'm assuming that part of that cost is a really nice deck of some sort, right?
Nice deck.
I'm assuming that with that cost, a nice deck is involved somewhere along the way.
And maybe, maybe even four nerves.
I will, go start.
Okay, well, thanks, I do better understand, thank you. I have, my last question, I'll turn it over to Catherine, goes to Carol, and it's my favorite topic, which is transportation, so I do have to ask one more time about busing because I just can't wrap my head around these numbers. But when I look at, for example, I'm just going to pull out four hundred point oh four private carrier carriers, I'm sure you have all these numbers memorized. But when I look at the twenty sixteen number, that was two hundred and six thousand. When I look at the twenty seventeen number, it's two hundred and seventy-four thousand. And now twenty eighteen is five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. So what's going on? And I know that you said that we had to go out for another contract and the money increased, but, but why are we seeing that number double?
Well, two, two things. I've done a little work in making the split more accurate. We get billed together, private school and special ed. So, because actually, some of the routes are used intermittently with, not only with our own, not really our own students, but with other schools. So it's a very complicated billing process. So I've taken some time to review it and really separate out what's what, to get a better handle on that. So the numbers in the past might not have been as thorough, I don't want to say, maybe they were done differently. Okay, so anyway, that said, there's some better data. So going forward, I think you'll be able to have more comparable data. The mix of students changes every year in terms of special ed and private school, where they're going. That always has an impact on the cost. This year, when they went out to, so to background on the transportation bid, Montauk had that bid, they sold that bid to Royal Coach. Montauk underbid the bid to get the business at the time, realized they were losing money, and then wanted to get out, sold it to Royal Coach. Royal Coach now realizes they're losing money on that same bid. So this, and that was extended, you know, was ended at a certain time. So now, they went to bid, the bid came out thirty-one percent more. We basically, we're floored, checked with other bids that were going out at the same time, and they were as high or more. Arslay was able to negotiate it down, so it's about more seventeen percent range, with some interesting maneuvers, and don't really want to speak to it in public. But anyway, so, so we're, I guess we're fortunate that it wasn't thirty-one percent that was originally presented. So it could have been disastrous. Basically, they're having trouble, they're saying they're having trouble getting drivers. And in fact, we know that to be true, because Artie's shaking his head. When we try to get transportation runs for athletics, they, you can't even get the buses right now. They, they have the vehicles, they just don't have drivers. But that's what they're saying, that they need the money for?
But, but I think the underlying piece is though, that this bid is consistent with what's happening in other districts.
Totally consistent, Harrison had the same problem of several other districts. You know, the other thing that I would say, Deb, that we're doing is that we're looking to expand the consortium. I've already had some meetings with our, the, the group that we're with, and asking other districts nearby if we can pick up some more kids to lower the cost. So we're starting to look at reaching out to Almsford, Greenberg, even some of the other districts, maybe Edgemont. Do you have one kid going to Rock and Boses that we could pick up? And then that would lower the cost for all. So we're looking for even, right now, not maybe someone to join the consortium, which is a bigger undertaking, but to at least pick up some more single rides, so that would lower the cost. So we're really doing a lot of that work also, Arslay's leading that, but we had a shared business official meeting to go over some of the thoughts and what we could do to lower the cost, because we all, we're all in the same boat, all four of us, you know.
Was the hundred percent increase in special ed busing?
No, it's, it's, uh-
You're in that bar.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's not apples to apples, what we're looking at, when we go back three years. Because in the past, some of the special, let's say, special ed, by way of example, was folded into the general transportation line.
They were very commingled, and, and I looked, took a look at the way it was built, and I've kind of straightened it in terms of how we're coding it right now. I'm big into code integrity, so, you know, really, it's, so that I can track it. Yeah, so we'll know, we'll know more of the trends.
When you break it out, why, why is it almost an eighty-six percent increase in just that, that strand alone?
Well, partly is, is the students, and partly is the increase in cost here, so. And so it should stabilize for next year because, you know, this bid will go out, but.
Sounds like the mafia. I'm joking, is it eighty-six percent higher?
I won't, I won't use that word in public, but.
Oh, yeah, now you tell me, I have to, I have to hold back, okay.
Carol, I did have a couple of questions. One was the budget for substitutes. How do you calculate it? I see it's two hundred and eighty thousand, so if I provide that, if I hundred forty teachers, a hundred dollars a day, that's twenty days off per teacher. But how do you calculate, how much do you need to budget?
Again, well, I'm kind of looking at what our actuals have been in the past and seeing what we need. We, we underbudgeted last year's, or this year significantly, and last year. So our actuals have been running higher, partly due, you know, I guess, professional development, the amount of days teachers take off, staff take off. So it's definitely another area where we're going to be looking into some more. But right now, I, I kind of did it more of what our trends are running. It may even be low, believe it or not.
Thanks.
So, you know, and part of, again, in code integrity, we may have put how you're, you're coding things too. So I'm taking a look at that as well, in terms of, should it, should have been maybe put a leave replacement put somewhere else. We do have some, some teachers that are covering for other teachers right now.
But I think that's one point we need to look at, because we have, that's something that's potentially of significance. And so Catherine speaks to the number of teachers times the number of days, but we're also looking at teachers that are out on extended leaves, and we have,
Right, it's an average.
We have people that are long-term subs that are being billed to that rate. And then we also have some, the, the rate for a long-term substitute is higher. Someone's here for an extended period of time, is long, they get paid at a rate that's greater than the hundred dollar per diem.
The other, the other thing too is, is as I do the analysis, we may decide we might want to increase our rate, you know, that we pay, because we're a little low on, on the daily rate, which makes it difficult to-
I know, a couple of years ago, we raised it.
Right, we're still a little low. And, and so when you think about it, one of the things we've done this year, and I'm hoping it's, um, going to pay off, is we've increased the building subs. So that actually lowered ultimately, because then you're not having to do so much teacher coverage, because we're relying a lot on teacher coverage right now.
We have subs that will call, actually call in at the last minute because they get jobs in other districts, which is highly problematic at so many levels, but.
When, when we look at the pie for curriculum and instruction, are, is the two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for subs that we pay per year, is that wrong with instructional?
Yeah, that's wrong in the instruction.
So when I look at, you know, year-over-year expenses, and things that popped out, one was the central data processing. Can you tell me a little bit about what the changes there were, or if it's not you, somebody else can answer the question.
So, so that is in sixteen eighty, right? It's simply, that is, the, the technology budget is the, yeah, it's the switches. So last year, we had only one switch for like eighty-five thousand, and this year, we're doing, Jesse, we're doing a two, three or four switches and a Maru something, a rather wireless access point thing, so.
So what's the CMS thing? I think it's abbreviated as, I kept on, and now it's very hard to call.
CMS?
BES.
CMS chassis switch.
Yeah, it's a certain type of-
So it's a CMS building, so it's captured easily sized.
It's called a chassis switch, whatever, you can speak to that.
So what, what exactly is that? I'm just, I'm curious.
So it's the infrastructure component for, so the switch controlling the traffic on the network for the CMS building. So there's several large switches in each location, that one will be used for at least.
So just as where we see the increase there in central data processing, though, the overall technology budget is relatively flat, I believe. And so we're looking at monies that are being moved from one code to another code, based upon what the needs are.
And keep in mind that we used to have a lease payment. That money has now been added back into the, either the twenty-six thirty or the sixteen eighty. I think that Jesse has moved it around in either one of those two locations. But he's kept flat the same number, so, and we prove that to everyone.
Then the other number that jumped out at me, quite honestly, was despite trying their best to keep special education flat, or BOSI's expense went up six hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five.
And that is-
It's one foot over the drive.
That's strictly based on student tuitions and the placement of existing students, that we know where they're going. So I keep a schedule, and, you know, Gail obviously updates this, but of each student, where they are now, and where the placement's expected to be next year. And that is only the students that we know of right now. Normally, I would even recommend to you that we would add a contingency there, but we just felt like we couldn't this year. But it's always a risk, and when you don't add a contingency there, that we could have another one move in. Could a student have a different placement and not maybe have to use the BOSI's program, which is one of the more higher, you know, yes, maybe you could, but it's too early to know that right now. But I, I think that, you know, it's responsible based on the student placement, with all, no identified students.
Just seems like a, I think it's a fifty-eight percent jump year-over-year. That was it?
I don't think my questions will be answers from, from the administrators, but I do want to give a chance to, to members to have questions if I need to answer them. If I can wrap up with my questions. So if our members of the community want to ask me budget-related questions, I would give you the opportunity now, do so. Share your name.
Hi. Is this working?
Yeah, that'll be fine, if you're right there, it's going to hear, it's going to catch you.
So I did have a question about what's going on with the Dowsley gardening program. The district has committed to fund it in any way. And if so, is there actually an advisor or staff that's committed to the program?
Yes, it's funded within our club.
Oh, it's considered to be a club?
And those positions are actually posted on a yearly basis, and, and open to all staff. And so those positions are filled yearly.
So is that like a Level One or a Level Seven for the club?
I don't know what that means.
Well, I've been told in previous conversations-
Oh, I know what that means. It's not group, I think is the word. It's not level, it's group. Okay, yeah, so off the top of my head, I want to say it's Group Three. I, I don't know, I don't want to say anything, actually. But we have Groups One to Eight, and the lower the group number, the more the stipend. So for instance, high school yearbook, which is a very intensive requirement or commitment for an advisor, is a Group One, whereas a club that meets once a week, board games, let's say, at Main Street School, would be a Group Eight. Beth, I can give you that information off the top of my head, I don't know.
Yeah, no, that's helpful, it's very helpful, thank you. I didn't know how it was being funded exactly. So, and then I had a question about Project Lead the Way, that kind of builds on something that Deb Harbraves was saying. So I was actually interested in looking at what grades now have Project Lead the Way. And the only, I could find nothing on Rubicon Atlas. And I could find on the district website, which I understand is undergoing renovation, grades three, four, and nine through twelve and eight. So I gather five is now.
We added five.
And six and seven?
Six and seven have been, six not, is not Project Lead the Way, seven and eight is Project Lead the Way. Sixth grade has an aligned program, though, that supports the kind of learning. They do coding and other things. The technology program at sixth grade is a little bit different than the seven, eight program, so at this point, we have not embedded PLT-W. But again, we do use the, the approach, the kind of thinking that we want kids to engage in, in sixth grade as well. And the same teacher, thanks, David.
Okay, that's helpful. So the question I guess I have is, in coming to a number of school board meetings over the past year or so, I've heard a lot about assessments, not in the sense of assessing the children, but in terms of assessing programming, or program. I'm wondering what kind of assessment of PLT-W has been done, if that's been a relatively short answer.
Sure, I, I mean, I think actually, the data that we recently collected, our goal in embedding PLT-W is, was- in embedding PLTW is, was twofold. So one is to increase engagement, is to increase both girls and boys' interest in, in engineering and the, and computer science. And our evidence shows that we're definitely starting to see that increase. In terms of the assessment of the program, we don't have a formal assessment process as of yet. I would say part of that is the yearly assessment that we do of what we're implementing. So I would say both Joyce and Deb, I'll give you an example. When we set out to do Project Lead the Way, we were very ambitious. We thought there were four units to every grade and we would definitely be able to do three units a year. Absolutely. And what we found was that the timing that PLTW allows for each unit was not really the reality. I think PLTW doesn't realize it snows in New York or, or that we, we sometimes get interrupted in our, in our regular classroom programming. So we, our assessment is right now of what we actually can do, not so much of what we've been able to accomplish. So each year we've modified what we're doing to accommodate the, the number of units that we thought we would be able to do. So now we're doing two units. What, am I, are we doing two or two and a half?
Two modules.
Two modules. So two modules. So the first year we thought we could do three. We reduced that. And now we're trying to do two and we're trying to do them well. Project Lead the Way says that it takes something like eight weeks, but it doesn't take eight weeks. So we made the commitment to the quality and not rushing through the units. So right now, we're just trying to develop our sequence and ensure that what we're doing is well done. And again, this was our first year of getting the Next Gen Science standards. So right now, we're actually just aligning and making sure that the units we've selected are the right units for Next Gen Science.
Right. So I was looking at the Next Gen Sci, the NGSS. I was looking at that.
Actually, New York State Science Learning Standards.
And I was looking at how they sort of divide up K through two as being somewhat different than three to five, like in terms of modeling versus mere experiences. And I'm wondering if to a certain extent, and I don't know if the climate survey touches on this, but if you're still assessing the program and building the program and you have a climate survey going out regarding, I don't know, how parents feel about certain aspects of the STEM curriculum. I don't know, is there, I'm still trying to understand with the seventy-five thousand dollar salary for the teacher, and I understand the other invaded costs, but also from coming to these meetings and hearing about how those are the costs that build by year to year that we have problems budgeting for. I don't, I'm still trying to understand, well, I guess you've explained it. I'm sorry. I don't mean to talk, I'm answering for you.
I like that.
That you do feel that, 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 that it's being said that it's important this specific year, this coming year to roll out K through two.
Well, I think, you know, we've delayed it three years now. If we don't do it this year, I want to say it's the third year that we will not have completed that sequence or that goal that we set out to do, which was a K-12 sequence. And I would just say that I think this year becomes slightly more critical. In the past two years, New York still hadn't adopted the standards. So we knew they were coming and we believe in STEM, whether New York did or not.
Right.
But now that those standards are adopted, it does feel like our, or we should be at least implementing an engineering program that aligns with those standards. So.
Yeah, even though New York, well, this sort of goes back to the whole transitional thing. They're still saying this is like their transition year. I understand there's five.
Twenty twenty-one is the, so, so it's not a transition year. I think what New York State actually has done very well in looking at these new standards is they actually are not saying anymore, oh, here are the new standards, can you roll them out in six months? New York State, with the social studies and the science have said, you have three years to do this. But three years means that we're rolling it out. That's when the fourth grade will have a test or an assessment. So three years means that we have embedded those science standards and we are now working on a, on a cohesive aligned curriculum. So I guess I just want to be careful. That's what New York State's finally doing is they're giving us the time to implement the New York State standards.
Okay. So, yeah, I guess I have to study up on it more because I thought that in the new plan, they were changing the assessments to fifth.
Oh, fifth. Did I say fourth?
Yeah.
Fifth. It's always been fourth. They're changing it to fifth.
All right.
Which actually also makes sense.
Thank you for the additional information.
Thank you, Professor.
May I have a follow-up question? So, question on the Next Gen Science.
More, I just couldn't hear what you said at the beginning. I'm sorry.
The clock on when this, the, the kids in fifth grade are tested on the Next Gen Science standards, that they would have started morning. They're, they're learning them now in second grade. So the clock starts this year or next?
No, the clock started. So the clock started this year in the sense that they're, they have laid, they have adopted the standards and they have outlined this plan that says we are going to, I'm sorry, I just, oh, they outlined the standards and they said that this is, you have X number of years until we will test students. I will tell you that it's not that I don't value those state, the state assessments. I do. I think they give us a set of information. But more than that, I think New York State is finally recognizing that you need several years to implement. And they're giving us those years. So if we don't do that, then it would be shame on us that we didn't start when we were given the opportunity.
Good evening. My name is Yasena Sorail. I have a first grader and a fourth grader in the district. I am here to represent parents who would like to see early world language programs implemented in our schools in the year school year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. I would like to repeat my question, which I raised a month ago and Erin raised it two weeks ago because we didn't receive a clear answer. It's regarding budget. We would like to ask you if it would be possible to include budget line for a foreign language consultant paid to explore the expansion of early world language instruction, foreign language in elementary school program into primary grades with the goal to have a FLESS program in the school year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. We received an email, but it was not clear. We would like to hear from you directly whether it will be possible or not.
Sure. So I, so I, I am not sure if the question is about having a consultant or if the question is about developing a FLESS program. And I think that those two are very different things. So I know from, I understand that from your perception that you think that a consultant could be helpful. But I guess I would also say we have a consultant that we work with. They've been working with, in our district now for four years, he has. And he's been working with all of our teachers. But I had it with that thing tonight. I know. So I guess maybe you could clarify your question.
Well, we understand you have a consultant, but we would like him to be focused particularly on developing a FLESS program so that could be implemented in the year two thousand twenty. However, of course, we need to explore different, as you say, we have to ask teachers and realize what we are capable of or not. But there has to be an analysis done. And that's what we are asking for. Is there a possibility to create an analysis that this consultant could, you know, conduct?
So I would say it's not an, from, from our standpoint, the work that needs to be done is the work with elementary teachers. I think I've shared this before, but I'm, I'm happy to say it again. When I look back at my years in district and all the world language committees that I've been on, I would say that the starting point for the world language committees that have come before us, prior years, was it didn't start with the right group of people. And the group of people that it needs to start with are our elementary teachers because that's the, that's the building, that's the program. Those are the teachers who ultimately need to support this if we're going to be successful. I've been on committees of thirty and forty people. I've been on committees of fifteen on this topic. And invariably, the majority of people at the table were world language teachers and parents with a, with a, with a representative teacher from, from either Dowslane and Main Street. And what I would say to you is that you really do have a lot of support on this topic in terms of, we believe in it. But I'm going to ask you again to trust me, we don't need a consultant right now to do this work. We need to engage with our building administrators and our elementary teachers to talk about what we believe, what we think is viable. The question, I want to say someone at more, or maybe Deb, someone asked before, well, what aren't you going, like with, with PLTW, what don't you have? So we're very clear on the work. And our consultant is an incredible resource actually and has already been a great resource for us. So we absolutely want to take care of the, include expertise. In addition, our six twelve language chair has been part of the conversations as well. So I would say that, and I think I've said it and I'm going to say it every time, trust me. You're just going to have to trust me. We, we hear you. We believe in this. We, we are working toward that. We have already engaged in a, in a small group of teachers who have volunteered, who want to be part of this conversation. But you're going to have to trust our process. And, and again, we hear you loud and clear. And by the way, thank you for the many resources you've provided because I've actually also shared some of the resources that you've provided with our group of teachers and they were very well received.
I would, I would add that, you know, to take the old phrase, the trust is being verified in that, you know, clearly there's been a response from the principals. Clearly you are having these conversations with the teachers and with the principals. So those, as you said you would, you are doing.
Absolutely.
Well, we're, we're thankful for that. We're just hoping that this is something that we're, you know, we're trying to see a progress and we're happy to hear. We didn't know about that there were conversations happening already with teachers. So that's, that's a positive news. We are hoping that this will move us forward, that we will not be stuck for several years just having conversations. And we just would like some action. That's all. Thank you very much. So the other question is with regards to surveys. In the past, you have mentioned that you would like to do community surveys. For example, this is one of the ones we just saw right now, the late busing. We would like to also, I know you're saying we have to include teachers, but I think it'd be also nice to create a survey where it comes to early world language. So that you can see, because we collected some data, however, we believe there should be a public survey as well conducted by the administration. So that's another point. When it comes to the late busing, one more thing, sorry. When it comes to late busing, I just wanted to mention, for example, we have no possibility of late busing for Dowslane students at all. You know, we are, I'm very happy to hear that actually we were thinking of middle school students. But if we start with, you know, having this possibility for middle school students, then suddenly the Dowslane parents will find out and they'll be like, but you know, we kind of need that help as well after, after, you know, after school enrichment programs. It's harder for us to pick up the children or have them bus to ICC or JCC. So I just wanted to also mention that. And I, you know, in general, we're very happy with the PLTW project. But at the same time, and the languages would be part of this, you know, the one worry that we see sometimes, parents who are supportive with the early world language programs, is that sometimes it seems a little bit that the district is trying to create a specific type of a future professional that focuses mostly on science, engineering, and math. And we just would like to make sure that there are other components in their education that, you know, that, that this particular part doesn't overwhelm very much the other social sciences part. That's just a comment. Thank you very much.
I mean, it speaks to the, the push and pull of what we're doing with this budget. There's, there's a diverse community with different interests and the challenges of tribe service.
Hi, I'm Erin Bernstein. I'm the parent of a second grader at Dowslane. Can you? I just want to echo what Yasena said about the focus on STEM and on the CPA. So I'm obviously a proponent of STEM. However, I do think that language is an important component of that. And as we talk about STEM in today's age, it's evolved to STEAM, which includes arts. And I never hear that spoken, where we talk about STEAM. And I'm just curious why we don't talk about STEAM and we only talk about STEM and we leave out the arts component of that acronym.
So actually, are you coming to the science fair on Saturday? You don't have to, so I didn't want to put you on the spot.
I am, I am coming. However, one of my son's friends just scheduled a birthday party, so I have to split the time.
So I would, if you don't end up in this, in the library, you should make, you should stop in.
And we were just.
So it, last year it was actually, it is STEAM and the science fair is STEAM-based. And you'll see, as last year, we have art projects that are absolutely focused through that lens. So we're very, we, our, our teachers are very engaged in that as well.
Just to follow up though, that's sort of an extracurricular activity? It's not something embedded in?
No, that art is not an extracurricular.
No, no, I mean the science fair is an extracurricular.
No, but you're going to see the artwork that our students are doing as part of our program.
Okay. Okay. Fine. All right.
So, it's awesome.
Not to beat a dead horse about the late bus, but thank you Catherine for pointing out. It was twenty-five thousand dollars, which would translate to a thousand dollars a person. I do hope that we're doing, that we're including things in the budget that are more impactful to a majority of students. And then I, because I'll just throw out crazy ideas because it's always so hard to cut costs. Maybe those parents would be willing to participate in sharing some of the cost of that bus. It sounds crazy, but we pay for lunch, we pay for other things. If it's that important, some parents might be willing to pay twenty-five dollars a week to have a bus for their students to take them home. Just a thought. It's crazy. I know. I'm sure anyone watching this, I'm going to get like stoned.
Yeah, I know. It's not a service that we can charge families for.
You can't. Okay.
But I just want to kind of frame, step back and frame things because when we're talking about the, the example of a thousand dollars per pupil was something that was based upon survey results, certainly a couple days old. And, and we certainly would be looking for a, a greater investment than, than a thousand dollars per child.
Okay. And I do want to say thank you, Raina, because I was unaware also that there were conversations going on with the faculty about the FLESS program. And I think it would just be helpful for us, maybe what we're craving is just a better understanding of a timeline and if there's conversations going on, like how that evolves, what then the next steps are and things like that. And I think that would help us to really understand how things are progressing. Because we can only see, you know, the clubs being offered and things like that. We don't know what's going on behind the scenes. So the formulation of a plan would be helpful for us and all of our constituents that we represent.
I want to answer that one a little bit, which is that you just heard from Dr. Core that she's a hundred percent behind this PLTW project. And how long has she been waiting to finish out the program? With, with, with our tax cap environment, with, with one point nine million of our two point two million cap being eaten up by, by very important costs, which is our wonderful staff, you know, everything we do is incremental and it's a challenge to make it all happen. So even, even the programs with the strongest support take time. And so I think at this point, there's not possible to create or provide that timeline. But I think you heard from Dr. Core that she's having those conversations. And from that, we would hope to see something more concrete developed. And you have to understand, it doesn't exist at this time.
I think we, we do completely understand that. But I'll also just say that I hope you understand that as parents who want something to happen in the district, we're going to continue to show up and to voice our opinion. And, you know, we appreciate everything you're doing. I can't say that enough, like we do. But we're going to continue to represent what the community wants. And we respect your position and I hope that you can appreciate ours as well.
Yes. And I failed, I failed to introduce my comment as I meant to, which is to say thank you so much for continuing to be present and to, to share your thinking. It's been very helpful and clearly is having an impact. So thank you.
And who knew these meetings could turn into such a love fest? I'll end on that note.
Very good. I hate to say it, but you probably can just watch whatever questions I have on video if you wanted to. But I do, I mean, the one thing I'll say is I'm going to address cost control and, and the fact that we do have bounds to maintain. So that being said, if you want to, feel free to, to have.
Okay. Can we go to slide one?
Who's got her first?
I mean, I really mean, I understand.
Thank you very much for staying. And thank you, everybody. Find out what happens at five forty-five. So a couple things. The, the aid for number could, could change because the Senate and Assembly are both supporting numbers that are larger than the governor's executive budget. So that's something that the next time we see budget shared could have shifted.
Yeah. And I hope that they'll do it in time. You know, they're not really, they've. they've, they've been...
They'll still be there.
Last year was a little bit later than the one...
Yeah. So that's, that's something that we could see different. Uh, and the other thing I would say is, while you don't have a number up on, on the tax rate for the last, last, uh, for this year's, uh, budget, it is under, no, no, for next year, for eighteen nineteen, but for seventeen nineteen...
The tax rate was, is there?
No, it was a question mark.
No, that was the, the increment from the, that year, this year to the previous year, but, so...
It's, uh, it's, uh, slide twenty-two.
That's the increase from sixteen seventeen, you can't make a comparison because of the recent evaluation, but from this year, from current year to next year, I mean...
I'm talking about, I'm talking about seventeen.
Yeah, I think...
So, but all I want to say is, it's under two percent for sure, right?
Oh, yeah, I think it was.
Yeah, so...
I did, I did an equation, but you can't really do it.
Yeah. So, and essentially, I just want to point out that, that during those years, we had very low, uh, tax caps and, uh, we expect that we'll still continue to, uh, to do what we, we seek to do, which is, if we could go back to slide one, is, I think, uh, you know, talking about the balance that we're, we're trying to achieve, we're being true to it, we're supporting academic and social emotional growth with continually improving programs, uh, you know, both in our increased facilities, uh, spending and in our proposed, uh, or, you know, our planning for a, a possible bond, we're, we're hoping to improve safety and then have, uh, great facilities. Uh, you know, we are, uh, there's, there's a commitment to, to professional development and, and clearly we're working hard, uh, we're in mediation process now and want to provide a fair contract, uh, to our staff. Uh, we stayed under cap, our goal is to remain under the cap without cutting program or staff. Uh, the bond that, that would be proposed is, is, would not increase taxes, uh, and our, our reserves have been, have been well maintained. Uh, so the question I have, and the idea I want to put out there is that I think we're getting to a place where we have to ask the question, uh, not, not all spending is the same, you know, when we hire new, uh, staff, uh, that is a commitment that, particularly, uh, in a number of cases that, that we're committing to for a very long time, uh, particularly with, with the, uh, the old cost that you mentioned in terms of retirement and healthcare. Uh, and so, I mean, I just want to put these numbers out there that, uh, just, just for us to, to think about, if my computer dies, essentially, uh, you know, from two years before the recession, uh, we were close to, I think, two thousand students, we were more around seven, two hundred and fifty students with the recession, uh, and during that time period, I mean, from early two thousands to late nineteen nineties to that period, our, our district grew, both in the number of students and, and the number of staff, our, our faculty went from the one fifty, one sixty numbers to around one ninety-five. Uh, a lot of those folks got, there were a number of folks cut following the recession, we built that back, we now have, uh, two hundred and four members of the IFA, a hundred and five, twenty-five members in terms of non-instructional staff, additional contractual, thirteen administrators. Uh, and so I think the question has to be asked, um, how many people can we hold on our, our payroll relative to the, the vision that we have? And I think, you know, we've laid out a vision, uh, we are being true to it, but the one that I'm glad to hear, that, that is posted right on top of your computers, is how are we going to, uh, to control costs? And I think the, the hard question is, uh, as we go forward, you know, we talked about PLTW or early world language or, uh, social emotional supports with the guidance counselor and whatever there might be for, for future years, um, it, I think we have to ask the question, can we keep adding, uh, to the number of staff we have, or do we need to find a different approach, uh, which, which controlled our costs? And, uh, I appreciate that, uh, you know, I, I think it's a, it's a tough, you know, looking at the balances of the, of the employees that we would propose to add, that we propose to add to the budget, um, you know, that, that, you know, what was made about, you know, well, does the late bus for middle school but not Dowslane, well, this, you know, we're hiring two people that are going to really, you know, would create the benefit for, for our K five program, and our teacher that, you know, I think documented, this needed, uh, in, in our secondary program has been cut. So it's not as easy today, are not easy decisions to make, but I think, I think we have to ask the question, are we, are we approaching the time and the now as of next year where we, uh, will be, uh, you know, we've asked a lot of questions tonight, but that, uh, you know, we may, we may not be at the place where we're adding more or five, uh, full-time employees anymore.
I think, Michael, can I just?
Yes.
Because what you say, um, it, it's so critical in terms of, like, when we look at those numbers and why, why are our numbers where they are and what, and, you know, before the, um, before two thousand and eight, I would say if we look at the high school, we had tremendous growth in our numbers and we actually had almost no growth in our additional staffing, and, and I don't need to sit here and comment on why that was and whether, um, what the process was, but the reality was that people, that the high school wasn't asking for the level of additional staff, and I think that one of the things that I saw, both when I was principal of Main Street, but also obviously in this position, is an expectation that we're growing our programs. So for many years at the high school, we grew our AP programs, and so we went from, I don't know, some crazy number of like two AP courses to twenty AP courses in my time here, but one of the things that happened was we were reallocating staff to teach those AP courses, so we weren't necessarily increasing our opportunities and experiences for kids in terms of other electives. So when you look over these years, all the different electives, I mean, how our science research program has grown or different opportunities we've really been able to provide to our students, and I hear you, and that's the dilemma, and it's the dilemma of being a small school district, right, where sometimes we run courses with very few students in them because we don't want to not allow a student to pursue a certain sequence or, or expand on something that's an area of interest, um, or something that they will pursue as, as they go on to college. So at the secondary level, we have provided a lot of expansion in those opportunities for students, and that has been the staffing. At the elementary level, it looks a little bit different. So just to do ten seconds of history, when I went into Main Street School, we had eight sections at every grade level, our numbers went down, and there was a time period, a very brief period, where we had six at every grade level. But what you see now is we see about every other year, our kindergarten class actually is at seven, and then we go to six, and then we go to seven. So now we pretty much balance at the K five level between six and seven sections. Um, so I know that in some ways the numbers have gone down, but we bumped back up at those, at the seven sections. Um, I, I think we could not argue that the need around special education, so when we look at those numbers, what, how many of those teachers, when we look at the increase, are fulfilling the demands and the needs of special education students who, um, who have at some very, very, um, um, high level of need, some lower level of need, but we've clearly increased our model of ICT classrooms as well as special programs, um, which sometimes also create revenue. Um, so when we look at those sheer numbers, where they're not necessarily held up against, well, how many of those, what kind of revenue are we getting from those, some, that small group of teachers who, where we can bring students in? So it's hard to label it as one thing or the other, but I, I hear you, and I think it's something that we, um, we grapple with, and I know, like, two years ago, and, you know, Chris and I talked about going back and really saying, so what is the limit? Where does it end? If we said to the administrators, perfect world in Irvington, what is that number? Are we just going to keep asking or not? I think some of it depends on, well, who shows up, right, and what people want, and I, I don't mean that in a bad way, I mean, it's, it's the reality, right? So PLTW came from a real need.
There were a lot of, a lot of parents coming as well.
Absolutely. So I think that we certainly, um, in the, in the next month or so, can step back with our administrative colleagues and say, I don't know, your world is, you know, is an oyster, like, what, what would it be? Like, how many more people do you really want to feel that we are as staffed as we ever could need to be to meet kids' needs? And I think that's probably a good exercise. I would think in a lot of ways, some of it also depends on New York State, so the mandate of the council, while we believed in it, you know, it shifts a little bit when all of a sudden now there are new regulations, so it's the push and pull of a lot of different pieces, but, you know, certainly, I know, I hear you loud and clear, and, and I think it would be a good exercise for us to, to start to figure this out a little bit.
And I think, you know, we're all parents, we have a commitment, we want to see great experiences for our students, we want our, our faculty and our staff to feel supported, but, uh, you know, some people who we don't see in this room do reach out to me, I assume to you, say that they're struggling, they're selling their homes, they're about to sell their home, they are, you know, really, uh, challenged, uh, you know, with, with the shifts that have happened over the last few years. Uh, you know, there are statistics that, that come out that, that show our community, you know, uh, my parents who recently moved here over sixty-five, there, there, there's not a lot of those folks who are able to, to stay in this community, so I want to be really attentive to, to those concerns.
I, I think it's a good point, but I, I think not only we look at it from a visionary programmatic standpoint of, you know, how much more do we grow, how much more do we feel we, we need to grow, um, but just to bring it all the way back to what you said, so we're looking at a budget that is, we're talking about is so very, very tight, and there are very few acts up there, and when we think about that, it's just, it proves your, the point that you're making, that just the, the base of the budget is hitting, starting to hit that tipping point where it's growing faster than you're able to sustain it. So, you know, we're not going to build a camp, if we didn't have a, a cap like we did, we wouldn't have five hundred thousand dollars to talk about. Um, so your, your point is, is spot on, and I think one thing that we have to be really proud of is that we had a commitment, and when we go and look at the, the year-to-year comparisons, and we go back to thirteen fourteen, we pivoted at that point, and there was a commitment in this community, a commitment from the administration and the board, that we were going to start to reinvest in, in programs, and there was a great focus in the secondary level, uh, but there was a focus at the elementary level, and now we're starting to see these pieces round out, and I think it's appropriate for you to ask the question is, what else will we see to get to that, that final target? And there's going to be modifications, and we talked about guidance tonight, uh, if we go back a couple of years ago, two years ago, it was the ENL program, where there was another requirement where we had to add staffing, and so when we step back and even look at the, at ENL component, um, we have to recognize there's changing demographics in our community, and the demographics that are shifting are going to bring about different types of needs. So when we look at change in demographics, we can talk about, um, the wonderful diversity that's starting to be introduced, and we talked about that a little bit last meeting. Um, we, we talk about basic student need as far as social emotional, um, we look at the, the, the concrete need is, uh, the fiscal need, and that, in the time that I've been here in Irvington, our free reduced lunch numbers have increased from three percent to almost ten percent in Irvington. So the, the, the look of Irvington is different today, uh, on a lot of different levels, there's different types of challenges, like there's special ed, there's more diversity, which is a, a wonderful piece, but what we can step back and look at is what we've done to build our programs. So now is, where do we land the kind of, on this runway to make sure we can be able to sustain it? And that's an appropriate question to ask and want to, that will work towards next year.
Well, and I, I think also that, uh, you know, it's, it's about looking at, you know, in terms of the cost controls, that there's, you know, a great decision was made a few years ago in terms of, uh, going out and, and, you know, refinancing our debt, and so even after a bodily, you know, debt service decrease, uh, you can talk about the, you know, the work, the, the something, well, the numbers increased, but you would have a different approach, I think, uh, I think maybe that's what I like, and perhaps the orbit would be, uh, to see, you know, what are, what are different ways that we can provide services that, that maintain and improve upon our services while also controlling those costs? Um, so, I believe that.
Let me just, and I could just add one other thing, because I'm in full agreement with you, Michael, that in terms of going forward, I mean, what I heard tonight was were the pieces that are missing, that the programmatic overall vision for the district we really need, the guidance piece I understand, the PLTW, I understand more, um, after tonight's presentation, but what I don't understand is going forward, when we look at our schools, you know, by, school by school, or we look at our programs, whether it's a PLTW or it's a high school EP, you know, you know, kind of objective, or, or, what, 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 from here to five years down the road, what should we expect as a board? If you're going to come back and say to us, I heard library media specialist last year, I wouldn't have known that two to three years ago, but when it was presented to us, it made sense, but I don't feel that we as a board today understand what we should expect in three to five years down the road, and maybe, maybe we don't know, or maybe you do based on retirement, or maybe you know because of the, the demographics that you're seeing that are changing, but I think it would be very helpful for the community and the board to say, this is what we can see as a vision going forward through five years. Don't know if you can do it, but I know that it would help us immensely, because we would have more expectations where we sit and see what budgets is.
The only example I would give you that I feel like maybe, um, maybe is a good example, maybe not, you know, five years ago, maybe six now, I mean, it was my first year in this job, that New York State threatened to adopt those next gen science standards, and I'm like, okay, we're going to get out ahead of that, and we actually spent the year with the secondary teachers, looking at the next gen science standards, really grounding them and what the expectations were, and we put it out there, we said we really need to do this work, and then New York State, it took them four more years. So I think there's some things that absolutely we can, we, we vision and we have good ideas and thinking around, but I also would say that I think we get thrown curves, curveballs quite often, um, so I feel like, um, there's some middle ground.
I totally agree, and I, I think what Michael and I are saying, I'm assuming the rest of the board feels the same, I'll chime in, um, it's really just full-time employees, I mean, that's really instructional employees.
Yes.
I understand all the other stuff that, you know, that you can't absolutely layer, but in, in terms of when I look at two hundred and four instructional and a hundred and twenty-five that are non-instructional, we really need as a board to understand where it's going to grow, the numbers in light of retirement, demographics, and what you see from the young people. The rest I can only imagine what can exist.
And I think, as we said before, leading from Raina's comments, um, I think we're in a place where I think as an administrative team, it's starting to have, we're having conversations that are different than they were before, I think the grounding in and around, um, the, the strategic objectives is providing a, a common dialogue, a different type of dialogue than we've had before, um, and as we said, we came to the table with far fewer wants and needs and recognizing that things are progression, are commitment. We said early on, we, we have to complete Project Leave the Way, we have to look at the STEM program, and then we're looking to other initiatives out there, so I think we can start to name and target what those will be, and start to estimate where they look from a developmental standpoint, and bringing these ideas forward, understanding that there's going to have to be flexibility when we deal with finances.
All right, well, thank you very much. Um, so we have a few more items to attend to. Will we need to bring up the calendar so we can just see that? So we have a consistent agenda, this includes an adoption of a resolution regarding, uh, the governor's, uh, executive budget would attempt to shift costs of local taxpayers, we don't want to see that, acceptance of a non-resident student, and the adoption of our twenty eighteen, nineteen calendar as well as some personnel matters. Uh, so, can I get the, uh, motion to accept the consent agenda?
Come on.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Excellent. Are there any questions related to consent agenda? All right, do I get, uh, all in favor?
If, if, Samantha, if I can just bring one thing to the intentions of the board, um, related to calendar.
Okay.
Uh, if Mrs. Hargrave will see the notation in December for your request at the last meeting, um, but at the bottom, um, there was, um, modification, just tweaking, um, a notation based upon where we sit today, with that great prospect of a snowstorm that I'm understanding, since we've been sitting here, is getting worse, that if our, if we have to close tomorrow, that we have to look at revising our spring recess, um, make notation of that here, initial days need to be made up, spring may, may be further modified by beginning of April fifteenth. So I just want to note that where our calendar does not include that reference, it does so, uh, for next year, and in doing so, we have, uh, plans to address the possibility of many more emergency closures, and I hope we don't see that.
So be careful planning your spring break next year.
Because, because right now we, we're in day seven or?
We've had six, we've had six days so far, we've had, um, uh, four, um, snow days, the power outage, and the community emergency September, so tomorrow would be day seven, and, um, if need be, we would be looking at the Friday, April sixth, um, trying to claim that as an instructional day, because we cannot extend beyond a rating day, and the only other day besides spring break between here and there is actual Memorial Day, which is a legal holiday for employees.
Okay. So based on what happens tomorrow, you can imagine there'll be some communications headed out to the committee.
Uh, we're going to take a, a five-minute break, then we'll have an executive, uh, session. Uh, the meeting continues with the executive session.
Get the commutator and join this meeting and...
Is it Howard?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's been a long night.
Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So, move it.
Adjourn to executive session.
Adjourn to executive session.
Thank you.
Matter.
Matter pertaining employment of particular persons.
Yes.
I only consider having an executive session if I have chips.
Okay, did we get a motion?
Yes, we did.
A second? Okay, I'm all in favor. All right. Well, now we'll take a five-minute break.